Okay, welcome everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the order for this meeting of the August 19th, 2021 City and Nashua Planning Board Meeting. We do not have our typical secretary here tonight, right? So can you go ahead and call the roll for us, Linda?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, Alderman David Tenza, Alderwoman Jan Schmidt, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and read a couple of things here since we have a sort of a hybrid meeting setup going on. First off, just a reminder, my name is Scott Leclerc. I'm the Chair of this City of Nashua Planning Board, and again, we're in the 19th of August 2021 Planning Board Meeting. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person here in the third floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall located at 229 Main Street, Nashua, and also via Zoom at the link that was posted on all public posted meeting agendas. Members of the public and representatives of the applicant have been encouraged to attend the meeting via Zoom or here in person at City Hall. Real-time public comment during the meeting can also be addressed to the Board utilizing Zoom or here again at the third floor auditorium at City Hall. If any individual has any problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3115, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access this meeting via the methods I've just talked about, this meeting can be adjourned and will be rescheduled. Note that the Board will continue to take roll votes at this point while we're in hybrid format, and we appreciate everybody's understanding and patience. So I'm gonna go ahead and also read the procedure here for the folks that are in front of us. So essentially, after each legal notice or each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the Board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will first begin with the applicant and their representative, but given time to present an overview and a description of their project, they'll speak to whether or not they agree to the recommended staff stipulations, and the Board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Next, I'll ask for testimony from the audience. I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. They can speak, they can come forward to the microphone or connect in on Zoom. You'll need to state your name and address for the record, and this is the time for you to express any concerns or ask any questions you may have regarding the plan. I'll next ask for testimony similarly for anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board will then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will be given a rebuttal period at which time they shall speak to any concerns raised by the prior public testimony. After this is complete, the public hearing will end, the Board will resume a public meeting. At that time, the Board will deliberate and vote on the application in front of us. I want to remind everybody, we're trying to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering our applicable approval criteria established in our Nashua Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I thank everybody for their interest and their attention, and if you do have a cellphone here, please go ahead and put it on mute, and if you are listening online, appreciate that you keep on mute as well until any public comment session. Okay, so first up, we do have some minutes in front of us from July 15th, 2021. Has anybody from the Board had a chance to take a look at those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they are ready for us to accept as written, or do they need any amendments?
I move to accept the minutes.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept the minutes as written. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please? Sure, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Communications. Anything from staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'll go through the items that are, that we received after the packets were mailed out, and they are in your folder this evening. First is an email from Carol Boule. She's a, in a butter regarding 5 Daniel Street. Next up, we have an email from engineering dated August 2nd regarding 413 South Main Street. Then we have some emails and correspondence regarding 2 East Brickbrook Road. We have engineering comments regarding the subdivision plan. We have engineering comments regarding the self-storage facility. We have engineering comments regarding the Costco. Then we have a letter dated August 17th from Kelly Jordan Price regarding the project at Nashua Landing. We have a waiver request form dated August 19th as well as a letter with the waiver request from Matthew Bruton. We have a letter dated August 18th regarding the Nashua Landing project from Kelly Jordan Price. We have a letter from Vanessa Associates regarding the traffic impact peer review from Sean Kelly. And then finally, we have a memo from Matt Sullivan regarding capital improvements. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Communications, I don't know if we have anybody here that was in any of the subcommittee meetings at this point. So I don't think we have any, anything to report there, or if anybody has anything. Okay, alright, so hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to new business subdivision. This is the first case. There are no new business conditional special use permits. The first case is case A21-016200. John Gergos, owner, application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision. His property is located at 37 Lovewell Street. This is Ward 6, so. First up for the Board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Board accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plan, case number A21-0162.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the Board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Mr. Maynard, are you presenting for the applicant?
For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, professional engineer with Maynard Pocket of Nashua, representing the property owners and applicant John Gergos. The property of concern is at 37 Lovewell Street and has 12,797 square feet of size in the RB zone, also known as Sheet 96, Lot 107. The proposal is to subdivide the property previously merged in 2000, so we're back into two lots. ZBA in May of 2021 granted four variances for, two for lot width and two for lot frontages. There is a sidewalk proposed along the frontage of both lots. Two waivers are requested, features within 1,000 feet, and underground utilities. With regard to drainage, a new leaching basin is proposed to the rear of the new house. Drainage should remain as is, has been for previous several years. The staff recommendations are acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maynard. Anybody from the Board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, could you speak a little bit about waiver request number two, specifically dealing with underground utilities versus overgr, above ground?
Well, the existing house has underground utilities already. This whole street has underground utilities, so that's, in this regard, the waiver for underground utilities is essentially for the new water and sewer connection and any gas line. I mean, what am I saying? For electric and telephone utilities, which would be overhead, the gas, water, and sewer would be underground. I don't know what else to need to hear from you.
I was just trying to hear the explanation for the waiver request, but...
It's an established street. There's no reason to cut it to the street when everybody else is on overhead. You saw this, and all the facilities are there already, so. In a new subdivision with new roads and things like that, it's a whole different story.
No, I understand the premise behind the question. This has come up recently on other cases. If it's strictly a cost matter, then that's one thing, but if there's another argument, then I was just asking...
I can barely hear you.
If it was strictly a cost factor.
No.
That would be something worth noting as well, so.
Okay, any other questions by the Board for the applicant? Mr. Hudson?
Sure, Mr. Maynard, can you help us understand what's the disposition gonna be of the existing garage and the current driveway access to that?
The garage was torn down in the middle of the process, so even though I may show in some drawings, the garage is gone.
Okay.
And what was the other part done?
The, just the driveway to the garage?
Yeah, it's going to, too. If you look, I think it's drawing number three, it'll say it's gonna be removed and loaned and ceded, so. That strip of land along the common property line has a notation to that effect, so. The existing driveway goes. Two new driveways.
Okay. Any other questions by the Board for the applicant? Hearing none, I will go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience here wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question of the plan? Please go ahead and come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for record. Okay, see, no, go ahead if you want...
I sent an email, and I don't know if you got it. Do we still have to go up here?
We do have an email from Carol Boule. Is that you?
Boule.
Boule. You can come up and talk, just go ahead and state your name and address for record.
It's not this project.
Yeah.
Different project?
Different project.
Oh, that's a different project.
It's still coming up. It hasn't been heard yet.
Hasn't been heard yet.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll call you up when that comes, yeah.
It'll be in a few minutes.
No problem.
It's okay.
That's fine.
It's okay. Yeah, well, we're doing our best, so we'll try to do better. Anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in opposition or have a concern of the plan, you can go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for record? Don't see anything, okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and go back to the Board one more time. Anybody have any questions of the applicant while we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. So we have kind of a new subdivision or a new, you know, splitting of the lot again here. We've got the sidewalk dealt with, it seems pretty straightforward to me. The overhead utilities, all the rest of the houses in the area have overhead utilities, so I think it's a reasonable request on my end. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would just add on the, on the overhead utilities. I know, Mr. Ballinger, as you indicated, we have had some discussions about this, you know, at recent meetings, but I would say that we have pretty consistently granted that waiver in circumstances like this where it's an infill situation and, and the rest of the neighborhood is, is overhead, so. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Leclerc that it's, that's a reasonable request here, but, but I agree, sort of worth evaluating the, the nature of the request in these cases.
Okay, any other comments from Board members? Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just, I would just note, it's in Mendola's comments on this, but I would note that this street is in moratorium, it was paved in August of last year. So that, you know, cutting will be, require approval of the Board of Public Works.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a guaranteed thing, obviously, so applicants should understand if they, they have that sort of scenario. They can come here first, but they can also probably go there first, so hopefully, hopefully they'll find favorably to that, but again, it's, it's up to the jurisdiction of the Board of Public Works.
Yep, thanks. Question for staff, the, I guess it's stipulation number four is the engineered letter, the date on that?
August 12th.
August 12th, okay. Alright, any other comments during the meeting here? Does somebody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would make a motion to approve new business project A21-0162 subdivision plan, and that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-138G, and there will be a total of nine stipulations. Stipulations, stipulation number one is a waiver request, requesting a waiver from Section 190-282B9 regarding the showing of physical features on the site within 1,000 feet, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two also is a waiver request from Section 190-221C, requiring underground utilities, and that waiver will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three is written in the staff report. Number four will be amended to insert the date of August 12th, 2021, and stipulations five through nine is written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Varley. So we have that motion to approve with the nine stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the Board? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, this is new business site plan, case number A21-0163. This is 5 Daniel Street LLC owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposed site plan to construct a 2,475-square-foot warehouse and office. This property is located at 5 Daniel Street. So from the Board, do we have anybody who's had a chance to review this application and wants to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? So we have a motion by Mr. Hirsch to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on the jurisdiction, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Mr. Maynard, are you gonna present for the applicant?
Thank you.
You can go right ahead.
For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, professional engineer with Maynard Pocket, representing the applicant and owner, Brad Lizzie, who's here with me in the audience, with regard to a proposed flex space building to be located at the end of 5 Daniel Streets across from the existing Lizzie's door facility. The existing lot is in the general business zone and contains a house and pool plus a shed located on a 5,997-square-foot lot, all of which are to be razed. The proposed new building is a typical prefabricated gray steel building, 2475-square-feet in size, with two pocket spaces in the front. The stockade fence will be erected along the front part of the suddenly property line, which is the left-hand side, to provide a continuous screen all along that property line. The entire neighborhood is generally flat. Drainage will be directed towards the existing catch basin at the front left of the property at the corner. There are several waivers being requested, existing conditions within 1,000 feet, underground utilities, a lighting plan. The only thing being proposed here is motion lights under the eaves at the front, the front corners of the building. Minimal landscaping is being proposed, although there's, there's a waiver for a full landscape plan. And the building design plan we gave you was a typical drawing from the manufacturer, although it's not a very, it's not an architect's drawing, so technically that's a waiver also. Staff recommendations, except for 9, 12, and 14, 9, 12, and 14 aren't relevant. I'm not sure in my staff report how those got in here, but otherwise, they're no problems.
Okay.
I don't know, did you ever correct your staff reports, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, that, I agree. 9, 12, and 14 can be eliminated.
I must have the old one, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that was number 9, 12, and 14.
Yeah, the stipulation that talked about unloading cars on the site, the stipulation about easements.
Well, actually, no, 14 stays. It's 9 and 12, and 8, 9, and 12, I think you're talking about. We still need a stormwater.
Okay.
Well, there is no stormwater documents to be reviewed because there's no
Oh, we'll go ahead and ask the question.
new facilities being proposed, so 14.
Well, it's just a standard.
If you want to put it in, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just a standard.
There are no documents, but that's okay.
Stormwater easements.
Okay. Any other?
That's it.
You're good, okay. So anybody from the Board have any questions of the applicant? Can you, this is scrib for the record, the type of business associated with the...
Installs overhead doors.
Overhead door.
Yeah, so this is for storage, minor repair, and it has a small office in it, but he, his work is all performed on-site at whoever's location wants it to, overhead garage door.
Okay.
Technically, it's Lizzie's overhead garage doors, is the name of the business.
Okay.
It's the same business across the street. This is, this is a second location on the end of Daniel Street. So if anybody went down the end of Lizzie's door and looked to the right, that's the same operation.
Okay, so this is just for, primarily for storage and minor repair inside?
Yeah, there's nothing particularly active here.
Alright, and then as far as vehicular parking on the site, there'd just be a work truck or something?
There's two spaces provided as required by the ordinance, so.
Yeah.
I don't expect, he needs it more for storage than he does for anything else.
Got it.
It's not additional traffic, it's not, might be an additional employee, but not right now, so.
Okay, thanks. Other questions for the applicant by the Board? I have a, we do have the letter from Ms. Boule, and I'm, I'm just gonna ask some of those questions myself.
The person who wrote the letter, asking about privacy, she's in the rear, and that whole back part of the half of the property, there's nothing happening there, there's no windows, there's nothing, so she'll have more privacy now than she has with this building than she has previously.
There's a question about the height. Can you, do you know what the height roughly is?
The height is approximately 40 feet.
Forty feet.
It's a peaked roof.
Okay.
But there's nothing back there. It's all the, all the doors and everything else, and the parking is in the front.
How does that compare to the height of the current building?
Uh-huh.
Do you know? How does that compare to the height of the current building?
Current building's a house.
Right.
And a pool, and the, I guess the house is two stories, it's probably 40 feet. It's towards the front of the building, the pool's in the middle to the rear, and there's some kind of shed in there someplace. But, so she'll have better privacy when this is built than she does today.
What about hours of operation for the...
Seven to seven, six days a week.
Seven to seven?
Yeah, but it's principally seven to five, but you know, there's always lingering and stuff, so it's, it's seven to seven, six days a week.
Right, but there's no customer traffic there?
No, and the reason I have to say all this, that's when the employees come and go primarily, so.
Yeah, okay.
This is, it's, it's nothing to see for a customer.
Yeah.
You know, you have to meet them on-site, see where the door is and things like that, and then take it from there.
Yeah, okay. Other questions by the Board for the applicant? Mr. Hirsch?
Mr. Chairman, is the building in, primarily is a metal building?
Yeah, so it's all, it's just a steel, it's a standard gray steel metal building. You should have, I don't know if they, there's four drawings in the, I think in the...
It was just kind of hard for me to understand them.
It's no different than what you've seen elsewhere.
Yeah, okay.
It, you know, it's, it's gonna be gray, it's kind of bland, but this is, this is a general business district, and this is the end of the street, nobody's really gonna see it, so.
Are all the other properties on the street residential?
The, the property to the left is residential, the property to the rear is residential, so the rest of the properties are all business.
Okay. Alright. Other questions by the Board? Okay, alright, thanks. At this point, I will go ahead and open to the audience. Ms. Boule, unless your questions, if you, you feel like you need to ask some more questions, you can come up at this point, yeah, so. Just a reminder, state your name and address for the record when you're up there, and try to talk in the microphone if you can, it might be a little high.
My name is Carol Boule, and I live at Ford George Street, which about Daniels.
Yeah.
And I understand what Mr. Allen said about privacy. That, that's my concern. And you, you mentioned a fence, you mentioned a fence going on the side, but you didn't mention anything about the fence that I see.
Okay, we'll ask him that, yeah, just if you can direct your questions to us, we'll give the applicant a chance to... We'll write them down, yeah.
Basically, privacy, which he's kind of addressed. But I'm concerned about my view as well. Like, they, the fence that they have now is really old.
Yeah.
I wondered perhaps if they could install either a higher fence or maybe some of those tall pine trees?
Okay.
You know, just...
Alright, we'll ask, yeah.
And I was concerned about noise and traffic, but he addressed that as well.
Yeah, okay.
And that's about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks. So we'll, we've recorded those, and we'll...
I'm sorry?
We've recorded your, your comments, and we'll, we'll ask the applicant for a rebuttal on those, so.
Okay, so the applicant will get back to me as far as the fence goes?
Yeah, I mean, they'll come back up after you're done and at least comment on what you said.
Okay.
So.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak, go ahead and come on up? And again, remember, state your name and address for the record if you can, and then go ahead and...
My name is Jerry Hope, and I live on 56 Temple Street.
Okay.
But I am a friend of Carol Boule's, and I would like, when I heard him speak, he said there'll be occasional work in that building. I would like to know what type of work, because I used to be a sheet metal mechanic, and I know one man can make a lot of noise with grinders and things like that. And the other thing I would like to know is, well, yeah, I think I already mentioned, there's not gonna be much traffic.
Doesn't sound like it, yeah.
But I'm, I'm concerned about the noise and also the fence.
Okay, alright.
And the days of the week that he's going to be working. Is he gonna be working Sundays? I was wondering if he's gonna be doing that.
Yeah, he mentioned six days, seven to seven, like, can be, we can ask him to clarify which days those are.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question about the plan? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none, Mr. Maynard, maybe if you could just talk a little bit about the fence and...
Whatever fences in the rear is gonna remain that way. The stockade fence I'm talking about is, is on the front.
Yeah.
Where the, all along the left-hand side, there is an existing stockade fence, and then the final 20 or 30 feet is not, it's chain link, so we're gonna continue that stockade fence all the way to the front, so it'll be 100% stockade fence screening all along that left property line from the, from the adjacent butter over there. Whatever existing fences in the back is gonna remain, no changes to that.
Okay.
I didn't hear what else she said, but...
Noise, the type of work inside the facility? Noise, the type of work inside the facility, was, is it generally create a lot of noise, or does it not?
No, it's, it's generally occasional, and it's, you know, these are, these fences, overhead fences. Overhead doors come pretty much prefab, you have to bring them to the site and install them, so that's where most of the, that's ninety-nine percent of the activity is. Here, we're just storing the fences in, in small minor parts, but there's no repair work per se being done here on a regular basis. Occasionally, they might, but not on a regular basis, and we, we're only working Monday through Saturday, and even on Saturday, it would be a part of a day, but who knows if somebody's lingering around on Saturday, definitely no work allowed on, on Sundays.
Okay.
I didn't hear what else the other.
Those, that's, unless anybody from the board heard anything else, Mr. Varley?
You've got to remember, this is, is the general business zone, so.
Yeah.
You know. Just, just a quick follow-up on the, on the rear fence, you said stockade fence is going to remain as is, can you just speak to the condition of the fence, is it still in good condition?
It looks in pretty good shape to me, the existing stockade fence on the side of the building. Once you put the building up and it's seven and ten feet away, that stockade fence is there, but it's not really the thing, the primary buffering, and the most important buffering is the new fence we're putting in, that goes from the front of the building to the street.
Okay.
You know.
All right.
The, the building itself pretty much screens all the abutters.
Okay.
And on to the right is a rail trail, so there's, there's no problem then, so.
Okay. Other comments, questions by the board? Yeah?
All set.
Okay, I think we're all set. So at this point, we're still in the hearing, anybody from the board have any questions for the, anymore for applicant or staff while we're still in the hearing? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With, with most other commercial applications that we've seen, I think we've actually asked for a stipulation that the hours be stipulated on the plan, and I'm, I'm sorry, it's very small print, I can't read if it's actually on there, so.
It is on there.
It is, okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Yep, thanks. Any further questions during the hearing? Okay, all right, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing then, move into the meeting, so, so we've got basically a, a new facility being constructed on the existing site, and we've got some dimensions on the building inside the, our packet, pretty good understanding, it sounds like, of the, of what's going on in the building, I'm pretty familiar with, you know, I think, most folks are familiar with overhead garage doors, so probably have a feel for what's, what's happening there, so. Any other comments, anybody has, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I would, I would just note, I mean, I think it seems like this is a, notwithstanding the fact that there's some residences, you know, abutting, including the abutter who spoke, I mean, it seems like a pretty low-impact use, it's really not introducing much in the way of additional traffic or noise, it doesn't sound like, in terms of sort of the general size of the building, it sounds like it will be, you know, fairly consistent with the size of the existing house, so I think, given that, as I said, it's, it seems fairly low-impact, and it's sort of, and reasonable, you know, in the, you know, for this lot as a result.
Anybody have any concerns with the waivers, any of the waivers? The utilities are already overhead in the area, I think the lighting plan, yeah, since there isn't any new poles or anything like that, there's only a facility mounted light, it sounds like, that seems reasonable to me, again, landscaping, it's really, this is really almost a residential-scale kind of development here, so. Unless anybody has any concerns with any of those they want to talk about, them delegate. Okay. A reminder, if anybody's going to make a motion, it sounds like, Scott, that number eight, number nine, and number twelve?
Correct.
Are recommended to be stricken by staff?
Yes, and number seven, the new date is August fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Five, August twenty-one, okay. For nuts for number seven?
Mm-hmm.
And is there anything from the, oh, number eight's out anyway, so, yeah, okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business A twenty-one dash zero one six three site plan, and that motion would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D, and there will be a total of thirteen stipulations. The first five of those are waiver requests, number one, waiver of section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE regarding existing conditions to be shown is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Two, being a waiver request of NRO section one ninety dash two twenty-one C requiring underground utilities, again, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Three, request for waiver from NRO section one ninety dash two seventy-five requiring complete lighting plan, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Four, being a waiver request from NRO section one ninety dash one eighty-one requiring complete landscaping plan, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Five, being a waiver request of section, of NRO section one nine dash one seventy-two A through C requiring certain building materials and configurations, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation six will be as written in the staff report, stipulation number seven will be amended to add the date of August fifth, two thousand twenty-one, stipulations, current stipulations eight and nine will be stricken, stipulations ten and eleven will be as written in the staff report, stipulate, current stipulation number twelve will be stricken, and current stipulations thirteen through sixteen will be as written in the staff report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Varley, so we have that motion to approve with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you most.
Yep. Next up, we have new business site plan, this is case number A twenty-one dash zero 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 six, this is Bissono, four thirteen South Main Street LLC owner, this is an application and acceptance of proposed site plan to convert an existing residential use into an administrative office, again, this property is located at four thirteen South Main Street. First off, I'll ask from the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
I'm looking to take jurisdiction.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction from Mr. Hirsch, do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction of case A twenty-one dash zero 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 six, so we have somebody from the applicant that wants to go ahead and present. Folks in the audience, if, yeah, if you could take it outside, that'd be great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a moment, yeah.
Should I wait a minute?
Uh, I think you're good to go, go ahead.
All right, my name is Jeffrey Brem, I'm with Meister Brem Corporation, I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer, here on behalf of Miguel Bissono. I will start by saying the last, I know you haven't been here for a year and a half, I haven't been here for thirty-five years, but thirty-five years ago, I worked for Allen Swanson, which became Hayner Swanson, so this is bringing me back to my roots, and I thank you for bringing me here.
Okay.
I'd like to, location of this property is at four thirteen South Main Street, that's just before the Rotary, and next to Hayward Ice Cream Stand, across the street is Riviera College, the map is there, everything to the right is what I just talked about, to the left on that map, to the west is Eastman Street, so the property fronts on two proper, two streets.
Okay.
Mr. Miguel, Mr. Bissono couldn't be here tonight, he was available on August fifth, but you didn't have a quorum, so I do want to read the letter he had wrote in the application to you, it's really short, but you get a feel for who he is. He says, "It's been an honor to be part of the national community for over fifty years, starting our roots at three ninety-nine Main Street in nineteen sixty-three, then moving to our recently well-known six Daniel Webster Highway across from Hayward's." So he, this, he was currently on the property across the street, and they moved there in nineteen seventy-three. "It was not only a business decision to swap locations with Riviera University, but a community one, we felt this would benefit Riviera staff and students along with our over six hundred local households that we insure," and that's a State Farm office, Mr. Bissono runs a, the local State Farm office. "Riviera previously uses property housed employees, there was a couple living on the main level, and one person living in the lower level. This property presented a wonderful opportunity for us to bring it back to life. Upon purchasing it, they've started to build relations with their surrounding neighbors, we have begun by updating the exterior with siding and windows, and we'd like to keep the lower level as residential and convert the upper level to commercial office space." So essentially, that's the purpose of the plan, they've worked out a deal with the, with the university across the street, I think it's a win-win for everybody, now we have to go into the details. So, the layout of the project is, the grades are such that the upper level by Daniel Webster Highway is, is higher, and then the lower level's like a walkout, and so that brings some constraints, so there is some staircase that he recently constructed on the far end, on the north side, that brings you down to the lower level, so there is access, what, however, the access isn't really all that convenient for some of his very few customers that come in, to always have to go up and down the stairs, so we want to build a couple of parking spaces on the upper level, which one had to be a handicap space, of course, so we're proposing three spaces on the upper level, that would be for his customers, he generally has one or two customers at a time that come in, sign papers, you know, we all have insurance companies, so we know that once in a while, we have to go over there and sign some things, that's the upper level, the lower level's used for employee parking and for the proposed residential, continued residential use down below. Total of ten parking spaces, three are upper, and seven down below, the breakdown of that, and we are well in excess, and we're asking for a waiver of what's required, mainly because of the use, he has two or three employees, including himself, he may have a fourth employee someday, he, and maybe they'll all be there at the same time, same thing with customers, he may have one or two customers come in, a husband and a wife type of thing, so they may need four or five spaces for, very occasionally, but they may need it, similarly, the residential will have two parking spaces plus maybe some guests, and if they all happen at the same time, you know, that could be a conflict, so we're proposing ten spaces there, they're pretty much the lower level, parking already is built, it's already there, so we're just expanding a little bit, squaring it off. We, we require to go to the Board of Appeals and obtain a variance, which was granted on July thirteenth, and the reason for that is because we're putting parking in, within these front yard setback, and what you don't see clearly on that plan, it, that whole front area is already paved, some of that pavement is in the town, the city's right-of-way, so what we've done is pretty much removed all the pavement that currently is being used by the previous owner, Riviera, and I think he's going to pull up the existing condition plan, and, and we're removing that pavement there, you could see it, and a lot of that is in the actual right-of-way, so we're taking almost all of it out of the right-of-way, we just have a turnaround proposed in the right-of-way that's left, but we did need the variance, and the Board of Appeals was kind to us, and they granted the variance in full support, unanimous approval, that was July thirteenth, and then we were up to come here on August fifth, but we had a quorum issue, now we're here today. Stormwater is pretty simple, we're, we're proposing an underdrain system on the back of the lower section, right down by that gravelled area, we showed a gravelled area because it's just excess land on the property, and it's kind of gravelled now, so just while the contractor's there to smooth that out and build that stormwater facility, that's been reviewed by your staff and engineering. We've gone back and forth with Scott and Linda, Carter, and other members of your staff, the fire chief and so forth, they made small revisions to the plan that you see before you, we did receive engineering comments, your review, your staff report doesn't have a date, but I'll tell you that they were received on July thirtieth, but I heard August second in the packet, so basically, a couple weeks ago, we got engineering comments, they are no problems for us, we haven't done them yet, waiting for this meeting, but if it's approved, we will meet those comments. We are asking for some waivers, this is a good time to go through them, Mr. Chair.
Sure, yep.
So the existing condition plan, we have a lot of information shown, but some of the information that you require is not shown for the simple plan. Lighting plan, the lighting's pretty simple as well, downstairs is residential, just a, a door light, same thing with upstairs, they're just going to have door lights, this is a, an office use upstairs, so it's pretty much during the daytime, in the winter, late hours, four or five, you still need a light, but it'll be from, from the building itself. Landscape plan, you'll see in the upper level, there's not a lot of room left for landscaping, and the lower level's just residential. The width, so we did talk to engineering, there is a width from Eastman Drive, that section, we're, we're pretty much going to the maximum, but he, as part of his review, he's going to ask us to wind that another two feet, and we've agreed to do that, we have enough room to do that, so we, we still need a waiver for that, though, even with the two feet, and I already mentioned the parking, we're exceeding the minimum parking space, four spaces is just not appropriate for this type of a use, and we're looking to get ten spaces. That's it, and then all the other comments from the staff report, we're in concert with.
Okay.
I believe, I don't think there are any neighbors here, and I think Mr. Bissono has worked it out with all his neighbors as well.
All right, there, there was some fire marshal comments about the requirement for a fire alarm system, did you see that?
No, I did not, but I'm sure that it's part of the building, that's fine.
Yeah, it'll be part of the per, building permit process, for sure, but it's not really a planning thing, but might as well know about it, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other questions on this application by board members here? I guess I asked, was there hours listed on the plan for the commercial component?
He did not list hours, but I don't know if it was in my application or not, Mr. Scott, but they're norm, I could tell you that they're normal insurance hours, Monday through Friday, occasionally a Saturday appointment type of thing.
Okay, nothing really extended.
Definitely not Sunday, so.
Yeah, okay. Other questions by the board? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and open it to the audience, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, have a question of the plan? Seeing none here, anybody online?
No.
No? Okay, at this point, I'll give the board one more time to ask any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, so move on to the meeting, seems like a pretty good land swap use for what's happening down there, and pretty reasonable layout to me, and I don't have any issues with any of the, the waivers being requested, does anybody have any discussion points, or, Mr. Hudson?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, there was a discussion about the appropriate date for Joe Mendola's email comments, his comments were issued on July thirtieth, there was some correspondence on August second, just relative to, was this ready to bring to the board or not, but I think the appropriate references should be back to the original comments of July thirtieth.
Okay, thanks.
I concur.
Any other comments from the board? Somebody want to make a motion? Anyone? Ready? Looking for a hand, Mr. Varley?
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, thank you, I will make a motion to approve new business project A twenty-one dash zero 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 six site plan, and that would be with the finding that these, project does meet the site plan, NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D requirements, and that will include a total of nine stipulations, the first five of those are all waiver requests. Number one is request for a waiver of section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE, which requires an existing conditions plan, that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, request for a waiver of section one ninety dash two seventy-five requiring a lighting plan, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, request for a waiver from section one ninety dash two seventy-four, which requires a landscaping plan, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four, waiver from section one ninety dash one ninety-three D and table one ninety-three one for width, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and number five, which is a request for a waiver of section one ninety dash two oh two to exceed the minimum, sorry. waiver of Section one ninety dash two oh two to exceed the minimum, sorry, the maximum parking, which will read is granted, and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number six is to read as written in the staff report. Number seven is to be amended to include the date of July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and stipulations eight and nine to read as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Barley with the nine stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, can I get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much. Okay. So next, there are no old business conditional special use permits. So next up, we're going to hear a set of cases here that are old business related to the Landing at Nashua. Before I read those in, I know the board's got a lot of pieces of paper to get in front of them. I'm going to go ahead and recess here for about five minutes for the board members to get all of your information in front of you properly. Use the restroom if you have to. Just get the applicant, you're free to set up, do whatever you need to, to get set up in front here. And then we'll go ahead and start procedurally into what's going on here. So I have seven fifty-one, so seven Update on where we left off, just so procedurally we go in the right direction here on a few things as well.
Certainly happy to. Good evening, members of the board. I do want to thank the chair for offering me an opportunity to quickly comment on the status of these three applications before you this evening. Obviously, it's been several months since the board last saw these three applications, with the exception of the board taking jurisdiction of the seven lot sub- about a month and a half ago at this time. One thing I should note for the record is that although the board did not achieve quorum at the August fifth meeting, obviously, planning staff did re-notify all of these applications. As a result, there's no need for the board to retake jurisdiction. Jurisdiction, jurisdiction is still held in hand by the planning board as of this evening. So no need to take action there. Principally, the staff and the applicant have been working cooperatively to make some updates to these applications, addressing not only the board's concerns, but also the concerns of the abutters, the concerns of city staff that have been addressed prior. And I think the applications that are being presented this evening do go a long way to address several of the regulatory deficiencies that existed before. However, I know you have a lot of documentation in front of you this evening. The applicant is going to try to provide a, I think, a brief summarized presentation of all of that information, but certainly staff are available as well to provide clarification. I also just want to thank the engineering department for their diligent work over the last couple of months to really, again, address those deficiencies in the application that had been identified. That said, happy to answer any questions about process before the board does dive in on these. But again, no need to take any jurisdiction. You can simply remove from the table, just like you would any other continued set of applications.
Okay, thanks. All right. So to start off, I'm going to ask the board, does anybody want to make a motion to remove from the table? We can take these all together, as we've been doing in the past. Again, these are case numbers A twenty-one dash zero zero two eight, A twenty-one dash zero zero two nine, and A twenty-one dash zero zero six two, which correspond to the subdivision plan and the two site plans. All for the owner of the Landing at Nashua LLC, Care of Dick Anagnos owner. These are all located at two Spitbrook, two East Spitbrook Road. So does anybody want to make a motion to pull these off the table? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table the following items. Old subdivision, case number A twenty-one dash zero zero two eight, old business site plan, case A twenty-one dash zero zero two nine, and old business site plan, A twenty-one dash zero zero six two.
Okay, so we have that motion to pull these three items off the table. Do we have a second by the board? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion on that motion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have someone here from the applicant, and you're free to start your brief summary.
Great. Thank you very much. For the record, Brian Pratt. I'm a civil engineer with Fossett O'Neill in Manchester. And we've been in front of this board a number of times, but it's the first time in person. So it's nice to kind of be here and doing this in person, even though I'm presenting through Zoom, sharing my screen. So I'll walk through the presentation and flip back and forth between some different materials to try to help visualize what we're going through. As you know, it's the application for Costco, True Storage, and a Costco gas station and associated subdivision. It's a seven lot subdivision to carve each of these uses and some of the future parcels onto their own lots. We've gone through the project in a number of different meetings, and we've kind of chipped away at architecture at some, and drainage at one, and traffic has been kind of back and forth a little bit. So I'll give you a brief update on some of the permitting first, because that's kind of quick. So the DOT, we've been coordinating with the DOT for the stormwater. So to refresh everyone's memory, there's a forty-two inch drain line that runs down East Spitbrook Road that goes out into the Merrimack River. We've been trying to coordinate with the DOT for quite some time, and we did recently receive a conditional approval letter, which has been forwarded to staff. And basically, there's some just minor conditions that we have to meet in order for them to sign the agreement, the joint use agreement. So the first is just repairing the outlet. So where that forty-two inch pipe outlets into the river, there's a little bit of undermining under the head wall. We've agreed to repair that. There's, the pipe is still in pretty good shape, but the DOT is concerned that where we're doing some excavation and work, that the pipe may, you know, shift or whatever. So they asked us to replace approximately a hundred feet of that pipe, just to give it, you know, another fifty years, so nobody has to worry about it. We've agreed to do that as well, providing an access easement, just so that they can kind of loop around the side of it, because we're kind of reshaping Spitbrook Road. So we kind of have the access drive that kind of goes around the corner. So we're giving them an access easement there. And then just the review of the actual approachment agreement. But we did provide the draft letter, so DOT has, you know, agreed to let us connect. As far as wetlands, we've met with the Wetlands Bureau a number of times on this, and we went to the zoning board a couple of times because it actually changed a few times. We went through this the last time, so I won't go in too much detail. But basically, we're doing some fairly significant improvements to a non-maintained wetland ditch that runs off-site. It takes entirely flow from the city. That's the purple area. And as part of this application, we are restoring that back to, pretty close to its original channel. So that's going to correct flooding issues that the city has at the end of Spitbrook, and it's also going to help flooding issues on the Worthen property. We had to coordinate with some of the abutting properties because that isn't on our land. It's on an abutting owner's land. So we did get signatures from those abutting property owners, and that has been submitted to the DES Wetlands Bureau. So that permit is imminent, because like I said, we've met with them. We've met with Army Corps, EPA, everyone on site, and everyone is all for it. We had a number of pre-op meetings, and they've, I wouldn't say conditionally approved it, but they approved the intent. So I'm going to bring up John Weaver, who is an attorney on this project, to talk about a couple of concerns that were brought up related to the use and some of the subdivision. So, John, if you're ready.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate that. Again, as, a little bit shorter here. As Brian mentioned, my name's John Weaver. I'm counsel for Costco, which is one of the stores that will be operating at the project once it's opened and finished. Two issues that, after consulting with the city staff, my client thought made sense to address here, were questions surrounding the subdivision, the legal basis for that, as well as the planning board's authority to permit the uses that are proposed here. So I'll handle those in that order. The questions surrounding the subdivision appear to be whether the subdivision should be permitted because by subdividing the property as proposed, that will permit the Costco gas station lot to satisfy the seven hundred fifty-foot setback that has to exist lot line to lot line between gas stations. Legally speaking, subdivision is a valid and popular tool for property owners to satisfy zoning ordinance requirements while also maximizing the value of their property. Think of residential subdivisions. That's essentially what's being done, right? Property, a large property is being subdivided into much smaller lots to permit more than one primary residence to be on the larger property. It's basically what's being done here. The property is being done, is being subdivided in such a way to permit the gas station where it is, where if the property remained unsubdivided, that would not be possible. So it's very similar, and the ordinance is operating the way it's supposed to. It's supposed to institute at least seven hundred fifty feet between gas station properties. That's being done here. The distance between the Costco lot and the BJ's gas station lot is, I think, a little bit more than nine hundred feet, as I measured it. So the ordinance is functioning the way it's supposed to. Subdivision is being used the way it's supposed to here. So there's no issue legally speaking in terms of using subdivision in this manner to permit this use there. And speaking of uses, Section one ninety twenty-three D of the Nashua ordinance addresses the planning board's authority in the mixed-use district and gives it the authority to modify the dimensional density and other regulations governing the underlying district. There's been some confusion as to whether that language is broad enough to allow the planning board to permit the Costco warehouse and Costco gas station uses here. That, that authority vested in the planning board is consistent with the ordinance, with the planning board's historic behavior, as well as with the statute that governs innovative land use controls in New Hampshire. So the language in the ordinance, as I mentioned, grants the planning board the authority to modify the dimensional density and other regulations of the underlying districts, whole stop. There's no clarifying language. There's no qualifications. There's no exceptions. There's no language like, except for the uses in those underlying districts. So the language is what it is, and what it is is a clear, broad grant of authority to the planning board to modify any of the regulations governing the underlying district, use included. That's consistent with the planning board's practice, but it's also consistent with the statute, RSA six seventy-four twenty-one, that governs innovative land use controls in New Hampshire. That statute assumes that the planning board is going to have the authority to operate and to administer the power granted under innovative land use controls. So the way Nashua has set up its system of innovative land use controls in the mixed-use district is consistent with the statute, how the planning board operates under the ordinance is consistent with the text of the ordinance. So legally speaking, I don't think there are issues either with the planning board's authority under the mixed-use district ordinance section or with the way subdivision is being used here. But I'm certainly happy to answer questions if those come up. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Well, did you want to?
Yeah, I just, I-
We might, let's, maybe I may have the board ask some questions as we're in the middle here, just because they're related to exactly what-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
-one of the speakers is talking about, just to be efficient here.
Yeah, sorry. So just to the point about the subdivision specifically, you know, one of the issues that the abutter has raised is the fact that the subdivision would create zero frontage lots, or at least zero frontage on a public road. We have the private road going through there. And I just wanted, wanted to seek the clarification of your position that that, that would be within the scope of the authority of the planning board here under the mixed-use overlay district, as you see it, in terms of-
Yes.
...being able to create those zero frontage lots.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Nope, we can go back to-
Great. Thank you very much.
...your presentation. Yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Again, Brian Pratt for the record. The other kind of reason that we've been continuing this is because we've been working with city and their engineers and working on addressing some abutters' concerns. Primarily, the concerns that have been come up have been related to traffic impacts on Adventure Way. So a number of the letters that you've received and memos have been working to try to address the third-party review engineers and some of the abutters' concerns about how that's going to function. I'll kind of take a quick step back and just summarize that this project has offered and will be providing significant off-site improvements. And I'll briefly go through those, starting at the south. The first is Spitbrook and Daniel Webster Highway, the intersection there. We're adding one lane, and we're adding a do-not-block striping to not prevent vehicles from blocking the Old Navy. We also are adding crosswalks where none exist. We're also adding pedestrian signal heads where none exist there as well. So that's going to be a safety improvement. signal heads where none exist there as well. So that's going to be a safety improvement and a volume capacity ratio improvement with the additional of the lane. We originally were not providing a island. We were trying to remove that island that exists in front of that Gulf Station, but the city did want us to do that, bring that back. So we are widening the road towards the Gulf Station a couple of feet to be able to put that, to be able to basically shift that island over. So we have the benefit of the additional lane and then we do have that island as well. Heading up the Daniel Webster Highway, I'll jump all the way to the north. So as vehicles are heading southbound on Daniel Webster Highway and trying to take a left onto Adventure Way, currently there exists just a short left turn pocket. When the BJ's gas came in, they did a traffic study and that showed that they had to expand that lane a little bit. They were aware at that point that we were coming in with this project and that this project would have to widen that lane further, or lengthen that lane further. So they contributed, I believe, $34,000 towards that improvement, knowing that, you know, we'd come in and we'd have to extend it further. So we are extending it further, which that really helps leave plenty of room for southbound vehicles to take that left turn. Whereas previously, currently as it exists, sometimes they back up into the street. So we extended that lane, I think, for 100 feet or so. Moving down on to Adventure Way itself, some of these improvements were being done by the BJ's gas station, but we're making some tweaks to some of them. In the BJ's plan, the right turn lane is a right through and the left turn lane is a designated left. But there's going to be a lot more left turning traffic, so we're swapping these lanes. It also helps line it up a lot better. So the left-hand lane here now can go straight across where it's, as it exists, if you're taking a straight movement from the right lane, you end up kind of awkwardly having to skirt around. This helps balance the traffic a lot better and helps keep the queues for both lanes significantly, you know, a lot closer together. We are adding a do not block intersection again, and that's to prevent vehicles, if in the very extreme circumstance, the queue will back up beyond their driveway. The do not block allows cars to get into the site, but it also gives the opportunity for cars waiting to get out of the site because, you know, any cars coming up behind that will stop and that'll give the opportunity for vehicles leaving CVS or leaving BJ's to get out. Coming further down Adventure Way, this is a newer improvement. We did extend the double lanes all the way to the end. Where previously, at bottleneck down to one and then widened back out at their driveway, we are extending the two lanes all the way down to where, at one point, it tapers over. So we have two lanes coming in. So that gives a little bit more capacity there as well and it helps prevent what's called the lane starving, where one lane, you know, there's a long queue, but the car's trying to go right and get blocked because there's only one lane. So that, that helps prevent that. The other really big improvement is that we, as mentioned, we've been working closely with the city engineers, planners, and their third-party engineer. And the city did ask this project to contribute $67,000 for a corridor-wide study. And that will study every intersection, I believe, from the state line all the way north. And Matt, did you find out, does that include exit one as well?
I may ask Mr. Hudson to comment, but I do not believe it includes the exit one interchange within the corridor study. Dan, I don't know if you have any, hate to lay it to you, but I do not believe it includes the exit one interchange specifically.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I think Traffic Engineer Wayne Husband may be on the line. It would encompass all the corridor as part of the coordinated signal system. I'm not sure if those are included in that. But I think that is the intent to retime corridors.
So I can give a little information on that. So
Sure.
When we started doing this, like the scoping meeting and the traffic study for this, we were, you know, we selected and we worked out with staff the critical intersections that would be impacted by this. During kind of design and approval and coordination, it was determined that a lot of these signals haven't been retimed in over a decade. And a lot of the equipment, I believe, maybe wasn't functioning at its full capacity or some, some of the items were, you know, were broken. So the purpose of this study will basically to do a full refresh of the whole corridor, where they have the capability to group these into coordinated signals. Sometimes they're not set up like that. So once this study goes in, it should significantly help the traffic on the entire corridor, the entire Daniel Webster corridor. And as mentioned, the applicant is, has agreed to pay $67,000 toward that, which should significantly help some of the, you know, if anyone's been down the Daniel Webster Highway in any busy time, it's, it's busy. So having those coordinated signals should help kind of coordinate everything and get everything moving a lot faster. There was also $34,000 that during the beginning of the process, that was contributed by the BJ's gas, which we were under the impression that that was going to be able to be used for that left turn lane. The city had since used that to replace some other equipment. So now this, this project is actually responsible for that $34,000 that they were going to get credit for. So they're basically given a $100,000 contribution on top of the significant off-site improvements, which are well over a quarter million dollars total. Again, you've received a number of letters from some of the abutters and their traffic engineers and they say something a little different every time. We've kind of worked to try to address those and the primary concern is queuing and delays. So queue lengths and delays on Adventure Way. You know, you can have multiple traffic engineers review the same thing and come up with different scenarios. We're, we're proud of the work that we've done. We stand behind the assumptions and the data that we've used on this. So, you know, we can show charts and tables and all that stuff, but we think the best thing to do would, to actually show a visual simulation of what we expect the intersection to look like. So we created this model in SimTraffic, which is a traffic modeling software, which will, sorry, basically recreate in software what, with the existing volumes on the street network, with the expected volumes that we're adding. And it'll actually run the scenario. So what we did is we picked the Saturday peak, which is around noon, and that's expected to be the highest traffic of the week. So this is really the, and there's really about 15 minutes of this that's really busy. So I think if you guys are okay, I can show a couple of minutes of this video. I'm going to speed it up to about a 10x normal speed. So it's going to look like the cars are going really fast, but that's just for the benefit of making sure we don't sit here and watch this for an hour. So on the left is the Daniel Webster Highway and you can see it's very, very busy as expected. Adventure Way runs left to right. On the top of the page in the middle, that's the BJ's gas station driveway. On the bottom is the CVS and Best Buy entrance. On the right is the four-way stop on the Costco. So SimTraffic, the way that we set this up is, it's like a dynamic analysis. So it takes into account all of these intersections and how they're working. So some of the previous analysis didn't necessarily take into account all of the driveways and how all the driveways interact with each other. But this, I think this is a really good graphic representation of how it's going to function. So, you know, like I said, anybody that knows Daniel Webster Highway knows it's busy. It's a retail corridor. You go down there on a Saturday, midday, it's going to be busy. You want it to be busy. Retailers, gas stations, everyone, you know, wants to be in the busy corridor. Some of the complaints from some of the abutters are that it's going to be so busy that it's going to adversely impact their business. Primarily, they're concerned with queuing, blocking their driveways and preventing people from coming in and delays of people coming in and out of their project. So this is starting to get a little bit busier. You can see vehicles leaving Adventure Way. They're starting to stack up a little bit. But they clear out. For the most part, this is how it's functioning. This is, like I said, this is Saturday during noonish time when this is the busiest. So this is the highest volume traffic that, that we expect to see. And this, just to clarify, this is in the 2022 year. So this is when Costco and the self-storage are both open. 2032 is another one of the complaints that the abutter had, but that is 10 years out. There's a lot of assumptions that we don't know that could happen there. There could be a train station and if that train station comes in, they'd likely construct the Fun World entrance, which would be an additional exit point from this property for all vehicles traveling north could utilize this, which would significantly reduce the amount of vehicles here. So, you know, we're about 25 minutes into the peak hour right now. So we're about halfway through the peak hour. And you can see, yeah, it's busy. The cars stack up, but it's very rare that the cars will back up past the BJ's and the CVS drive. You know, you might get a scenario where somebody blocks, somebody stalls, whatever. You can't, you can't worry about all those. But see here, the, you know, one car comes close to blocking, but it clears out. So I think this is a really good visual representation of how it's going to function. I've watched this a number of times. I'm very familiar with this. I live about a mile from here. Well, about three miles from here. I do come down here. I try to avoid it during busy times, but. So I can, if anyone has any questions about, you know, what this model is or whatever, feel free to jump right in.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, in your simulation, could you please indicate where the vehicles are entering and exiting the CVS, the Best Buy, and the gas station, the BJ's gas station?
Yep.
I just wanted to know like where that is on there.
Yep. So the, the middle of the page and the top, that's the BJ's entrance. So that's their primary entrance. Directly across the four-way stop, that's the CVS and the Best Buy entrance. All the way to the right, that's the four-way stop intersection on Costco property. So at the end of Adventure Way.
Yep. So those two red dots in the middle, that's the gas station and the drugstore?
The top red dot is the BJ's gas. The bottom red dot is Sky Ventures on the right, right where it says Adventure Way on the right. And then CVS is right on the left, under Adventure Way, under the words.
Thank you.
So, you know, just some of the other questions that were brought up were, you know, some of the initial analysis showed some of the queues were lengthy, that were, that were going beyond their driveway. The reason for that is because we, we did an initial conservative analysis, assuming that the pedestrian phase was called every single phase, and that's, I believe, 20, about 27 seconds. This analysis assumes that that pedestrian phase is not called every single time. So, you know, occasionally there may be a pedestrian phase, but we did counts out here, I believe, and I don't believe there, there are many pedestrians in this area. So I think it's a more accurate representation to do this analysis, assuming that the pedestrian phase is not happening every time. But again, it's, you know, it looks, it looks like a normal intersection to me.
Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. I just had a couple of questions relating to traffic. So one is that it relates to the, you know, the software demonstration shows, which I find very helpful. But one of the, the comments that was made by BJ's is that, that there was some change that was made to the software program that was used in the traffic analysis and that was basically because it was unfavorable results the first time and then it was adjusted. So I'm not suggesting that's the case, but I was just wondering if you can address that comment specifically.
Yep. So we use SimTraffic because it has the ability to act dynamically and function, interact with other intersections. So the previous analysis basically just said that all Costco traffic was all making it right to the Adventure Way and Daniel Webster Highway intersection. It didn't take into account the functionality of the four-way stop on the Costco site and it didn't take into account the do not block sign that we have. So this is a more accurate representation and this was actually partially created by one of Mr. Bollinger's comments about making sure that the onsite intersection, that four-way intersection on the right, making sure that the queues didn't back up way into the site there. So we actually started developing this model when that question arose. So in order to, you know, I think, provide the most accurate representation of how this is going to function, we went through and did the analysis with this software. And, you know, this, this simulation is really, really telling too as well. You can, like I said, you can see a queue length based on, you know, the other software. It tells you the maximum queue length. But again, those are the very worst case in the peak hour and it's, you know, for about 10 to 15 minutes typically. And, you know, those very worst cases, like I said, they do show that, you know, the queues can back up past that driveway. But as you saw, that, that was very rare. You know, it's, it's on a Saturday and, you know, some of the abutters' complaints were that it's going to increase queue times and it will. I mean, it's a Saturday on the Daniel Webster Highway and there's going to be a new business back there that doesn't exist now. It's a dead end. So, but will it adversely impact their business? No, I don't think so. They, you know, they complain that the increased queue delays are going to, you know, be the delays of their business. But their driveways are coming out at that do not block. So they're never going to have more of a queue than what they're waiting for at the end of, from their driveway out because we have that do not block sign. So when a car is trying to leave BJ's, there's not going to be a car stopped in front of them. They're going to have the opportunity to nose out and then as soon as that traffic starts to go, they already have a head start so they can get out. So usually, one or two cars can get out because of that do not block. So that was a mitigation that we installed in order to try to, you know, help them and make sure that their driveway didn't get blocked for vehicles coming in or out.
And so sort of following that point though, so it sounds like this, this was, this is basically a more advanced software model.
Yep.
And it reflects some of the improvements that maybe weren't reflected in the initial analysis. Is that, that fair?
Yep. So it's more advanced. The, the initial one was a very simple one that said that, you know, it was a very conservative approach that said that the pedestrian phase is going to be called every time, which is, you know, it's a conservative approach to see what's going to happen in the very worst case scenario. But it doesn't make sense to do that for every single phase when, you know, maybe there's one pedestrian per hour that uses that or, or two per hour, something along those lines.
And does this model accurately represent where the tapering begins of the two lanes on Adventure Way going, going, you know, sort of into the, or I'm sorry, coming out of the Costco site?
Yeah, graphically, it's, it's a little different graphically, but the, the measurements are correct. It's, it's not as, you know, graphically drawn, it's not like an AutoCAD drawing. These lanes are generated just by the, the software itself. So, but yeah, we did accurately put in to match what's on the plan.
And that I, I know obviously that we're focusing on this intersection because it's, it's, you know, the, the focus of the comments from, from BJ's. But the other intersection at, at East Spitbrook Road, is there, did you do similar simulations there or did you find that not to be necessary because there weren't the same concerns expressed?
Yeah, this, this is a lot of work to prepare something like this.
Okay.
You know, to put in all the different intersections and distribute the, the traffic internally. So where that's kind of just a, you know, an exit, all of our traffic that's leaving that way just kind of ends there. Whereas this, you know, we have this four-way intersection on the side here and we have the BJ's entrance in close proximity to, to everything else. We didn't go through that analysis in that much detail and I don't have that information. But there weren't any concerns, I believe, from any of the engineering comments or anything about queues over there. So we didn't spend any additional time over there.
Okay. Thanks. And then just, just one other question for now. This may be a question to staff too. I'm not sure. But the, you mentioned that, that the applicant's making the contribution for the corridor study and you indicated that would result in improvement. So I just, maybe if you could clarify, is it the anticipation that the study would result in recoordination of the signaling at the different intersections and so that would improve the traffic? Is that basically the concept?
Yeah. So my understanding is that that is going to do a full corridor-wide. It's going to use, I believe, new counts at all of the determined intersections and it's going to make recommendations for signal timing. It's going to make recommendations for equipment upgrades. I believe they're going to analyze if there's any equipment that's malfunctioning or needs to be replaced. And I believe they're probably, I believe they're going to make recommendations for coordinated sections so that, you know, some signals that maybe are right next to each other that aren't coordinated now, I think they're going to look into that. And please, if I'm speaking incorrectly, please.
No, that's my understanding as well. And I, I know that either Wayne Husband or Dan Hudson can comment maybe further on the scope of the study, but that's absolutely the premise of our discussion. You know, we're well aware that there are both infrastructure and timing related issues related to the signalization in the corridor. This study is intended to let This study is intended to lay the foundation, or really the base, for some future infrastructure upgrades that will need to be made in the coming years that the engineering department is coordinating currently. But I don't know, Dan, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that. So, this Daniel Webster corridor is, you know, we have a coordinated traffic signal system. It's a good system, but the data that was used originally to time this corridor is quite dated at this point, one of 10 years old. And we have some failing equipment out there. The city's undergoing quite an effort to try to replace detection in areas that we have those issues. So, in a sense, there are, the corridor is congested, will continue to be congested, but can run much more efficiently if a process is undertaken by where we improve the hardware out there and then update the timings to reflect current and changing traffic conditions. So, this, the proposal and I, there's reference to an agreement between the city and the applicant regarding this, I want to be clear, that's not the case. This is the engineering department's recommendation to the board to consider for mitigation would be to make a contribution for this effort. This, this is more than simply, you know, an initial re-timing, it also includes reviewing and updating this corridor over time. So, for a period of time, you know, I think this initial agreement we're targeting is for a year, but there's an initial effort to do some re-timing, update counts, and all that sort of thing, excuse me. And then we would continue with a consultant for a year to continue to tweak and upgrade that system. It's long overdue for the corridor, and so that's the intent of the effort.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
With regard to the timing of the lights, when you say the timing of the lights, that means, you know, setting when they change color. But with the coordination, does that term mean there's like an algorithm where the lights communicate with each other to maximize throughput? And are these, those two separate things, the timing effort versus the coordination effort, or one is more advanced than the other?
Sure, so the coordinated signal system, basically, there's a centralized computer system that speaks with each of the intersections out on the street. So, each signal has a separate controller cabinet that has timings in it. The signal system, you know, we can change those timings. So, there's a number of timing plans, you know, you may have an AM plant, PM plant, Saturday plant, holiday, you know, period plan. So, where we implement different coordinate signal timings under various conditions that occur. The, it's only as good as the data you put in. I mean, these signals, the first thing, that's important, they need to see a vehicle that's parked there waiting to get a green light, so that's some of the detection issue that we're trying to resolve. We have some cases where we have issues like that. And then the second part of it is, we're implementing camera systems which allow us to continuously count traffic. So, over time, we can continue to collect data and refine, refine, refine the system to gain the maximum efficiency that we can out of the system. There is a limited amount of number of lanes out there and that sort of thing, so there's only so much capacity to get out of that type of system. But it will allow us to upgrade, refine, continually refine, and maximize the efficiency of the system. The coordinated systems, I mean, part of the intent is to move traffic along the corridor, so, you know, you don't hit every red light as you go down the corridor, right? It's to progress traffic through corridors, you know, providing the, maximizing the use of the capacity and providing the greatest benefit to the users of the corridor. So, that's the intent of it, it's a very complicated system. You know, like I said, it was installed about 20 years ago or so, you know, and has aged, needs update, and needs this refresh, and so that's, you know, in looking at what could be done along this corridor, this is the best mitigative measure that we could come up with. I think it would be very beneficial. As noted, you know, it would be beneficial during the peak times, but also, you know, the off-peak times. At all times, you want the detection working properly, you want the timings working properly, and users of the corridor, when the system is fully updated and revised, should see benefits along the corridor.
Follow it?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
So, just to be clear, the lights don't dynamically readjust based on the current traffic conditions, they have to like be set, is that correct?
Well, they do, they do, so when you pull up, say there's a green line, you're approaching the intersection, it'll add time for you, up to a certain maximum for that phase, and then it'll go to the next phase. Some of the, there are systems now that can adaptively change cycle lengths and do all kinds of things. So, we're not quite there with this yet, but this will, under the scenario that we currently have, the configuration we currently have out there, this will allow us to maximize the use of it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
I have a question for the applicant as well?
Sure, go ahead.
In our staff report, we received a traffic queue-length memo attachment with all these timings or queuing statistics?
Yep.
And one of them that really caught my eye was on Adventure Way on an average peak Saturday midday, entering over 6,400 cars per hour, exiting over 6,300 cars per hour. I mean, that's a lot of cars, all going on to Daniel Webster Highway, which is already overcrowded. So, you know, when I looked at your video, I didn't see anything close to 6,000 cars going by one hour at that rate. And are these numbers, the numbers you're sticking with, 6,400 per hour entering and 6,300 per hour exiting? Are those the correct numbers? Because they're in the report.
What's the date of that? Is that a memo?
This traffic queue-length memo attachment came in our staff report, with all the, all the test results based on...
That's the backup data?
SIM traffic simulation survey summary.
So, that was the, what's the date of that attachment?
July 27, 2021.
So, it was the queue-length memo that you're referring to, it was the attachments on those, so...
Yeah, 2032, Saturday midday peak. No pedestrian, no right turn on red, and then these numbers, like in the 6,000 vehicles per hour range, coming and going on the DW highway.
Do you mind if I just take a look at what you have, I just...
Certainly, here's the report, if you're interested in seeing it. Thank you. Right about here, about that?
Right. But that is probably...
Yeah, Brian, if you're going to comment, make sure at the mic.
Yeah.
Take the paperwork with you if you want to refer to the numbers.
I have, I do have a traffic engineer on the Zoom call that may be able to look at these, but I think, I think those are the through traffic on the Daniel Webster and not into the site, but...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Bollinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe to answer Mr. Peterson's question, I'll let the applicant's representative answer this in their own way, but I believe that those numbers are not representative of the actual ins and outs of the proposed site. I think those are total entering and exiting vehicles on a network level for that specific node for the duration which, for which you ran the simulation. I would certainly allow your traffic engineer to comment on that further, but I don't think in any of the correspondences that I've seen throughout this entire process that you were proposing anywhere near 6,000 vehicles per hour at your site. That would be monumental.
Right, yeah, that would be impressive. We would need a much bigger building. I believe that's right. I was getting towards that.
So, summarizing that in lay terms, that's all of the cars going in all of the directions?
I, the way I'm reading this, Mr. Chair, it's basically, yes, for the hour duration at which they ran their simulation, roughly, again, it's not my report, but 6,000 vehicles entered during that simulation and 6,000 vehicles exited, so that would be, if you kind of drew a cordon around the...
Entire.
Yes, precisely. So, it's not strictly representative of just traffic entering and exiting the Costco site. That would be my...
It'd be mostly the through traffic going north-south on Daniel Webster, both, you know, both total directions.
May I comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
It would be good if the report clarified which traffic we're talking about. Is it on Adventure Ways, or on DW Highways, aggregate, which is it?
Well, I think maybe it'd be helpful...
Should not be subject to interpretation.
But you said you had your traffic engineer, so maybe if the traffic engineer could just confirm...
Yeah, we have one of the junior engineers, but it's, like I said, there's been a number of requests on, you know, to fill in this certain data. So, I, you know, I just figured that the results in the memo versus looking through the appendices and picking out numbers in the appendices, you know, looking at the actual words in, you know, the summary conclusions, and looking at the simulation really was a more telling grasp. And I apologize, our full traffic engineer is on a plane right now, so she wasn't able to make it today.
Well, they provide the numbers, and that's for us to look at, and so I thought they put them in there for a reason. I would hope that that's the valid data for his...
Well, yeah, no, I'm not saying it's not valid, I'm just saying that, you know, you look at an appendix that has raw data, it's tough to interpret for, you know, for non-traffic engineers to go into an appendix table that just looks at the raw data. It's, you know, the memo is kind of the, you know, the piece of information that, and that's just the backup information, the appendices, so...
May I ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
Also, when we talk about the traffic study on the Daniel Webster corridor and these numbers that were in the report, do they take into account that there are two new supermarkets coming online right there nearby on Daniel Webster Highway? We already have three supermarkets, and they're putting in two more that are under construction. That's additional traffic, and I think we need to take that into account because that'll be online like within a year. And the other thing is the proposed train station, it's more cars, and it would be nice if these reports took that anticipated train station traffic into account also because people are going to have to live with this forever once this project is built, and it would be nice to know ahead of time what the traffic is really going to be.
So, I can answer the first question. We had a scoping meeting with the city when we first started this analysis, and we, one of the standard questions we ask are, are there any projects that you're aware of that are imminent to being submitted or have been submitted? And we do take those into the network, I believe?
At that time, neither project had been approved, just to be, for clarification. At the time of the traffic scoping meeting, neither the 272 nor the 292 Daniel Webster Highway projects had been approved.
So, this report is July 27, just a few weeks ago, and those things are approved in the springtime?
Correct, but the applicant, I'm just saying that the applicant is speaking to the initial traffic scoping meeting. Mr. Peterson, I absolutely agree with you that the most recent reports related to the application were in fact subsequent to the 272 and 292 approvals. The initial traffic scoping meeting, however, was pre-approval for those two applications.
Either way, we're going to have to live with the end result.
Understood, and I would also comment that certainly, at any such time that the train station is constructed, additional access would have to be provided for that development. But we recognize that whether it be through the Fun World access to be built out at a later time, or potentially even a cross-access through the Lovering property that's been contemplated as part of prior plans, and is also shown with these proposed plans, there would be a need for additional access to mitigate that traffic impact. So, you're certainly correct that if any further development occurs, additional analysis and potentially mitigation will be necessary.
Thank you.
So, I do have, the DOT put out a PowerPoint recently about potential train station options, so the plan that I'm showing up here does show a conceptual layout that was completed by the DOT, showing the potential train station and showing the access road from Fun World being connected. So, that would be, you know, a direct shot right from the Daniel Webster Highway right down and right back out for traffic coming from the south and then leaving to the north, so... And that would benefit the project as a whole because there's going to be cross-easements to allow connectivity so that cars, you know, could use that new road to head to the north, which would take traffic off of Adventure Way if this does get constructed.
Question?
Yep.
Would the proposed train station share the same parking lot as Costco, or there'd be a separate parking lot for that?
They're not going to share parking with Costco. I apologize for that. Can you refresh my memory?
Parking for the train station?
Oh, parking. So, no, so the Costco and the train station will not have shared parking, but the train station and the future development pad that I'm highlighting here, six and seven, there will be reciprocal parking easements over those. One of the conditions that was in the staff report did mention the Costco being shared, but we kind of reviewed that, and it really doesn't make sense for a couple of reasons. One is physically, it's difficult to share parking spaces. Costco also, they need every space unfortunately, but with the building pad six and seven, that's a more logical approach to share the parking between those two. So, we are willing to grant reciprocal easements over the remainder lot, which is building pad six and seven and the train station lot. But Costco can't, just can't, they need every parking space.
So, I couldn't quite hear all that, but so, on occasion, they'll share parking lot? But for the most part, the train station will have its own lot, is that correct?
If I may, Mr. Chair, Dick Anagnos, the developer of the site.
Just give your address, Dick.
Mr. Peterson, may I answer your question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Dick, just give your address if you don't mind.
11 Westwind Drive, Bedford, New Hampshire. I almost forgot where I lived, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Peterson, there is a staff recommendation that there be, or a condition that's been put before you tonight that should you decide to vote, that one of the conditions at number 10 on the subdivision recommendations and number 26 on the site plan recommendations both state that we would endeavor to put cross-parking with Costco and the train station. But if you look at it geographically, Costco really doesn't abut the train station except in that little boot parallel to the river. Geographically, it works better, the future development lots that are outlined there, and I can't see the numbers because I'm blind, six and seven, abut the proposed train station parking lot that would be exclusive to the train station at this time. So, what we're proposing in lieu of Costco having cross-easements for parking there because it's too far away and they'd have to cross another development in order to get to that lot, that lot six and seven have cross-easements with the train station because of the adjacency of the parking, okay? It's more conducive to a better flow. It would be very difficult for someone to park in the train station lot and walk across two developments to get to Costco, and vice versa, it would be difficult for someone to park in the Costco lot and walk through two more developments to get to the train station. So, geographically, it works a lot better with us granting the cross-easements on the directly adjacent property. Did I sufficiently answer your question?
Not exactly, but you're saying there's an adjacent property in between the train station and the Costco parking lot?
Yes, it's designated on that plan as lot six and seven.
Gee, I can't see that far, but...
Yeah, I can't see it either, I see it here on the, on the screen. He'll zoom in for you.
Yeah, I see it. So, six and seven would be a cross...
Correct.
A crossway between the Costco property and the train station property?
Yes, so the cross-easements, instead of being on the Costco property for parking there, would be on lot six and seven, which is directly adjacent to the train station property.
I can see it now, thank you.
So, did that sufficiently answer?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, Mr. Peterson, or?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, other questions by the board for the applicant?
Oh.
Go ahead.
On second thought, I do have a question.
Sure.
So being as, you know, we're advised that the numbers in this report don't really represent reality as to what we're gonna see in the end product, are we going to see, and it's a final summary of what the traffic conditions will be on east, east Spitbrook Road and Adventure Way and DW Highway with the two new supermarkets and the train station? We need to know what's down the road for us ten years from now, rather than a bunch of numbers that we're told aren't really relevant because there are-
Let me, let me just, let me just correct you on that. That's a raw data appendix that spits out just a number of numbers. That's, those aren't producing results. That's just the raw data. That's input from existing traffic counts. So the fact that I don't know exactly what that number means doesn't mean that that's incorrect data. That means it's, it's the raw data that's just the printout from the software from the analysis. So, um, they take a little exception, you know, to you saying that that's incorrect data because it's not. It's just the raw printout that anybody that's not a traffic engineer wouldn't have any idea what it is.
So my question is, will we receive a, uh, a summarized report as to what the realistic, uh, traffic levels would be on those east Spitbrook Road and Adventure Way and DW Highway with regard to this project?
So the initial report was created based on the scoping meeting. At the time, the scoping meeting didn't have those additional grocery stores. So we are not gonna go back and, and spend another two hundred hours redoing a whole report to add traffic on the network. Those are existing buildings that were reused. So, you know, a grocery store, yes, probably has more, um, traffic than say, uh, a retail that was there. But, um, no, generally you don't go back and change the report every time another user comes in. Um, the, the memos that we produced supplemented, um, based on some, some, you know, questions that were brought up by the board and the abutters. Um, I don't, I don't think the general intent would be to create a brand-new report with everything, but we have the report and we have a couple of, uh, appendices, uh, memos that clarify some, some differences. So, you know, I'm, I'm confident that the data that we provided is accurate. Um, but no, we weren't planning on, you know, starting from scratch and redoing a whole brand-new report.
Yeah, and maybe, Mr. Peterson, I, I could add some, some comments that maybe go to your, your concerns. So I think the first point is the applicant just pointed out, there, there was a comprehensive report that was prepared and submitted with materials that we received that had the, the traffic counts. So as the applicant said, it didn't include the two grocery stores, but they did provide that report. And then the other thing, and I'll ask the staff just to confirm, but the, the, the train station is not part of any application that's before us right now. So that would be a future approval and obviously we'd have to consider the traffic impacts at this time, at that time. And as, as Mr. Sullivan said, I think, you know, we, we would certainly be looking at, you know, additional mitigation measures. But it's not, we, we're not being asked to approve that use on this site at that, at this time.
Right. It's outside the scope of this conversation, the traffic with the train station.
Mr. Hudson?
Uh, further to, to the, to the general information, um, traffic studies generally by, by, uh, nature always include a background traffic growth rate in the analysis. So future projections, um, have an increase of traffic. And I don't recall what the percent was for this. I believe it was one percent.
I think it was one.
So, so, uh, future projections, you know, account for one percent, uh, increase in traffic year over year. And that's to account for such things as new developments and other things like that, that occur over time without, without, uh, you know, separately including each one of them individually. So there are, there are mechanisms built in this study to account for growth, such as the two grocery stores recently added.
And, and this project is, you know, willing to contribute the sixty-seven thousand for a car to wide study, which will do actual counts, will take into account grocery stores or any approved projects or any pending projects and, um, you know, basically reanalyze everything and then make recommendations on the entire car there so that the car can function as a whole where we just studied the, you know, the agreed-upon intersections that are around here that didn't go a little bit further away.
One more question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Varley mentioned that there's a, a summary somewhere of what the, our best estimate is what the traffic was gonna be. If, if, if you could, could you tell me where I might find that information?
Yeah.
Because I've got like piles of paper here and somewhere in there for maybe-
Right, I know. I'm, I'm going through the same exercise right now, so. And I did get a little clarification. Um, Mr. Bollinger's, uh, analysis of, about what those numbers, the sixty-three, sixty-four hundred were, is correct. Is that those are total numbers entering and exiting the roadway network as a whole during the peak, not just our site. So it's-
I mean, including the traffic on DW Highway?
Exactly.
Like aggregate number?
Yep.
All streams?
All directions, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Hirsch?
Could you speak to the queuing, uh, on the southbound side of Daniel Webster Highway turning into Adventure Way? Uh, I noticed your simulation kind of cut that off. How, and how long is it gonna take some, how many cars and how long do you anticipate it's gonna take someone to make the left turn into Adventure Way from DW Highway at peak time?
Um, I don't have that information handy, but we did size it so that the entire queue fits within that lane. So it may take a couple of cycles for them to clear through.
So the queue, the queue would be handled by that, uh-
Yeah, so, yep, so we took-
Expansion, okay.
The worst-case queue and we extended it just beyond that, you know, beyond that so that the cars don't, uh, back up into the, into the main, uh, two driveline, drive lanes.
Because right now, going south on Daniel Webster Highway on Saturday, you can back up to, um-
Yeah.
Pass Lovering.
Yep.
It does quite often.
Yeah, the good news is that is, there was only like a two-foot median. So all we had to do was shift the median over, shift a couple of catch basins over because that creates a, a drainage divide. So it's, it's relatively minor work. So we were able to shift it back, um, a significant distance.
I was, I was, I couldn't quite, as I was reading through the traffic reports, I couldn't quite understand the queuing times, but it would be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have-
I don't understand the terminology.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated.
Yeah.
Um, so we have, we have about seven hundred feet of queuing lane for that left turn pocket.
How many cars then?
Seven hundred feet is, um-
Thirty-five cars?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah, it's just over twenty feet per car. So it's, what, twenty-two feet per car? So thirty, thirty-five cars can be there.
Thirty-nine cars.
Yeah, I think it would probably take a couple of cycles to clear that. So they'll, they'll sit there, but they'll get in eventually, but, and they'll be off the, the road.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? So I have a couple of questions regarding the, this sort of the DOT connection. Um, I saw the, so the, the DOT is requiring you to do some work on the, I think it's a forty-two inch, uh, pipe that's, that's coming out-
Yep.
-outfalling on the merrimac. Um, that work, does any of that work have to take place under the railroad?
No. Um, nope. The, the pipe through the railroad, we ran a video through. It's a forty-two inch, um, concrete pipe. It's in very good condition. Actually kind of walked up it a little bit-
Yeah.
-to get, you know, be able to feel it and everything.
Yeah.
Uh, so that pipe is in great condition. Uh, the head wall itself is in great condition. It's just what's happened is, um, as the water-
Yeah.
-kind of comes out, it comes under and it's been undermining a little bit.
Yeah.
So, um, it's just the area under the head wall that, um, some of the materials washed out. So we're gonna get in there, we're gonna cast, uh, a slug of concrete under that to make sure that the water can't undermine it and then do some riprap around the perimeter.
Okay. And none of that work that's at the outfall requires permitting with the Corps for the navigable waterway issue? Because this board has definitely run into this a couple of times and-
No, because we're just, we're just repairing it.
Stalled the, uh, process here.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a new, you know, it's not a new outlet. It's just repairing an existing one. So it's repairing it to what it used to exist. So, um, that's being submitted as a wetland permit application through DES. Uh, Army Corps reviews DES permits, um, to make sure that they fall within the programmatic general permit, the PGP.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, for the most part, ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent of them, uh, don't require any additional information. But sometimes the Army Corps will ask for a little bit of information to make that determination that, that DES has the authority to grant that permit.
Okay.
I do not expect it to, to have to go to the Army Corps for a, a individual permit, though.
Okay. And then you don't expect to have the coordinate anything further with the railroad then, since you're not going under them?
Yep, we have to coordinate crossing it with them and we have, um, received, uh, approval for that.
Okay.
We've already introduced the contractor. They've walked it, they've checked it out. Um, they actually were one of the parties that signed the wetland permit because it's on their property.
Got it. Okay.
So they'll, you know, they'll, we'll have, uh, a flagger when they're going out. Um, they'll, um, supervise, you know, crossing the tracks because we'll have to get a-
Yeah.
-a little mini excavator over the tracks to get down there.
Okay. Um, and you mentioned that, um, the pad six and seven, that you'd be amenable to a, um, sort of a, um, uh, shared parking kind of easement-
Yep.
-you know, for that. So, so obviously we'd want to stipulate that into this particular application, even though six and seven are not proposed for, um, development at this time. You don't have any issues with that?
Nope. Um, so as the condition is, reads, uh, it reads that the Costco site will do the shared parking. We're requesting that to be amended to say that this future development site and not the Costco will be the one that shares the parking.
Do you have a ballpark on the number of spaces that are in that development? Is that-
So it's, this is, this is a rough concept.
Yeah.
We showed a restaurant and a gym.
Yeah.
Um-
Those are just concepts.
They're really, yeah, they're really rough concepts. So I do have the train station concept where they show, uh, four hundred and fifty-four parking spaces, which is very similar to our layout.
Yeah.
Um, they tweaked the pa-, uh, the station, um, location a little bit. They slid it a little bit further north. But, so this would be four, uh, four hundred and fifty-four on the train station lot plus whatever we have, um, on ours. But the configuration could drastically change, but-
Sure.
Um, you know, we have, with what we have shown here, it's, um, I didn't count these, but it looks like probably seventy-five spaces or so.
Something like that, yeah. It's on that order of magnitude.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, just a follow-up question on the, um, the parking access. So I understand that you, the applicant's position is they, that you think you need all the, the available parking spaces for the Costco lot and that additionally it's not, because of the physical proximity, it's not really ideally suited for, um, parking for the railroad station. But I'm wondering if the applicant would be amenable to, in addition to the, the specific access for lot six and seven, additional stipulation that the applicant wouldn't affirmatively prohibit, um, parking by users of the railroad station so that, you know, it wouldn't be an obligation to provide an easement, um, but it would just be an agreement that, you know, for example, you wouldn't tow somebody who decides that they are gonna park in the Costco lot even though it's, it's not really well situated for that.
So it's, I'll, I think Dick might be able to answer this better than I.
So I don't know what an affirmative representation would be in writing, but in the Costco contract, it prohibits any kind of, uh, cross easement or access by other parties other than Costco for liability purposes. Costco's a very large company that would be assuming liability for, um, outside parties that are not shoppers, should they go there. And they can't affirmatively assume that liability. They've got to be able to put a defense on that says, you know, you're on our property, you didn't use our services, you fell down. Yes, there, if there was an issue, we're in charge of it, but we didn't invite you here to, um, fall down on our property. So it's very, very difficult to craft any kind of an affirmative, um, statement to that nature, short of an easement. The only way it's enforceable is really with an easement. And again, it's not geographically suited to it anyway. I mean, I don't know how you could create an enforcement by Costco to prohibit somebody or to, um, unless you had a full-time traffic policeman there checking everybody going into the store. So there's going to be cross-parking on every one of these lots at some point or another.
Right. No, no, I, I understand and, and, and I agree, you know, the, you know, in terms of enforcement, um, you know, that, that would be certainly a challenge and I appreciate that, you know, that Costco, you know, wants to, done, you know, wants to generally limit the parking to, you know, their, the people who are utilizing the Costco. Um, I just thought maybe that would be sort of an intermediate option where it, we wouldn't be asking the applicant to, to affirmatively permit anything, but it would just be sort of the reverse where it wouldn't be an affirmative prohibition, I guess, on parking. Uh, and I, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's simply not an issue to begin with. Maybe, maybe you wouldn't, maybe Costco wouldn't be, you know, posting signs that would prohibit people from-
Right. Well, it's not my, honestly, it's not my, um, within my purview to give anything on behalf of Costco anyway, because at the end of this, Costco is going to own its own lot. And right now, the Costco contract to purchase its lot would prohibit any kind of that kind of a covenant anyway.
And we do, I think counsel for, for Costco is, is here, correct. So I, I don't know if it would be helpful to have him speak to this issue.
Make sure you state your name again, just, just because of being recorded.
So I, I'm John Weaver, counsel for Costco. Um, but I'm, uh, land use counsel for Costco, uh, so I, I can't affirmatively say anything one way or another. I, I would say that if I were, uh, counsel for Costco in another function, I, I would be reluctant. I have similar reluctance as expressed by, by Dick to, um, the, the proposal that you're, you're making. I think, as he said, it's true. Functionally, there's going to be all sorts of cross-parking just as a matter of course. They can't be effectively enforced given that the size and nature of the facility. Um, but I, I, I would not feel comfortable advocating, um, for the, the type of proposal you're, you're suggesting to a, to a client.
Um, with us tonight, JP Andrews is here. He is with Costco operations and he can give you operational reasons why it will not work either on their behalf. But again, unless, short of a police officer checking everybody going in, are you going to the train station or you not? I can't imagine you being able to identify a car that was going to the train station that parked in the Costco lot in order to tow it. So, um-
JP, would you like to say anything?
Good evening. Again, for the record, uh, JP Andrews with Costco, Director of Real Estate Development. Um, there's really two things. Uh, one, when we build these Costcos, there, there's a prototypical plan. Not only the building, but the parking, the fuel facility, it's all very prototypical and it's very specifically designed for our experiences and history with the project. And so what you see here is a prototypical square footage of a building, is the prototypical layout for the fuel facility, the one-way flow and all of that. Even the parking, the eight hundred and fifty stalls that we shoot for, that is very specific to our anticipated capacity, particularly in the holiday timeframe. So it, it, it starts to create a potential for a problem just in that alone. Then you get into some operational, uh, potential complications where, and it's actually two ways. Take our shopping carts, for example. You know, if, if they're shared parking, our, our carts could make it on other properties and then we, we, we have a liability of our employees going on other property trying to collect carts and it just kind of blurs lines. Or, you know, if, uh, we're trying to plow our lot during a snow event and someone, you know, left their car stranded there and we can't plow our lot because some random car that we can't identify is not one of our members, uh, is there. So I, I could go on with examples that can just complicate things. So we just try to keep it clean. Um, the eight hundred and fifty stalls, we expect to, maybe not tomorrow, this is forecasted out, but at some day it's probably gonna max out at the holiday season. So we're, we're trying to forecast the best we can so that our operation stays clean and safe and, uh, functional. So we just try to stay away from the shared parking. It, it just leads to issues in most cases.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay. Uh, not hearing any at the moment. I think it's probably a good time to open up to, uh, Mr. Sullivan. You have something?
Just a brief comment. I, I feel it's important to put on the record.
Yeah.
Uh, obviously, as the, the drafters of the condition that the board is debating related to shared parking, uh, we certainly have an interest in ensuring that the proposed train station, when and if constructed, has adequate park, parking capacity for effective use of that facility. That was really the intent of the recommendation of that condition. However, after further conversation, both internally today and with the applicant, we do feel that an amended condition requiring that an access easement and parking easement over the six and seven building pads be provided, we do feel that's an adequate remedy to that capacity issue. Uh, can't speak to any of the operational challenges that Costco might face if an, an easement is placed on that property, but certainly, I think from a staff perspective, we are supportive of an amendment to that condition to modify the shared access and parking to, or shared parking specifically.
parking specifically, to that future pad site. Obviously, it makes sense additionally because this really only happens if the train station is built, rather than requiring that parking on a facility that we know will be built in the near future, it makes sense to tie to that other contemplated development further down the line, so we're supportive of that condition amendment.
Okay. If there are any immediate questions by the board, I'm going to go ahead and take any, anybody from the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern, I have questions, I think, try to get a few of these on the record here at a reasonable hour.
My knees have gotten worse since I was here last, but anyway, my name is Ken Do, 452 Connor Road in Nashua. I've tried following this, this plan since January, it's tough to do by Zoom, I missed a couple meetings, this is, I guess it's, it's everybody's first time here in a while, so anyway, tonight I came here to offer my two cents. I've been a Costco member for years now, I, I shop them from New Hampshire to California, they're a very successful operation, and what you have to understand is, every day at Costco is Saturday. So it's not like we're preparing, and I, as a planner, I know you don't prepare, you can't prepare for the worst-case scenario, but you have to prepare for a scenario. And I think I have to go back, and I'm sure you understand it, but I want to try to explain what today's traffic is like at Costco right now. Someone goes to Costco, I'm, first of all, I would bet that over fifty percent of them, of the members are from Massachusetts. How do I base that? Just driving through the firing lot, it's probably way over fifty percent. It's easier to get to Costco from Massachusetts than it is from New Hampshire. Anyway, I've written a lot of notes, I had prepared statements, Mr. Peterson's comments on traffic took up a lot of white space, I'll try to stay within my parameters for the time being. I've been a member of Costco for a long time, I hope that they find a good site, I'm excited about them having a bigger site, they've outgrown this site, their gas stations are phenomenal, they're a big benefit to the community. I sat here tonight, my concerns is traffic. You have to understand how people gets to Costco today. If you're a Mass member, probably over fifty percent by my guess. You come up the highway and you get off the exit thirty-six, take a left at the end of the ramp, take another left at the intersection, go up the hill, shop, when you're done shopping, you do that in reverse, get to the bottom of the hill, two rights, and you're back on exit thirty-six. Now, if I'm from Massachusetts, if I'm from New Hampshire, the bulk of the people will probably go down Spidbrook Road. Not an easy road to begin with. I get off at exit thir- at exit one, come down Spidbrook Road, most times have to make more than one light cycle, especially as I get closer to Costco. So that heavily impacts that, that section. But then I go up and shop, and when I leave, I get on exit thirty-six, and I'm off and running. So Costco today does not impact, to a major degree, traffic on Daniel Webster Highway. This new plan pushes everybody either from exit thirty-six, where they have to go through multiple light signals, coordinated or not, I mean, that section's, that has been failed for a long time, and it either pushes them down from exit thirty-six or down Spidbrook Road. Spidbrook Road, you know, I tried to follow the diagram, I mean, I think it was cut short because just, you know, sometimes you have every, every traffic light, you barely make one light cycle as it is. So where, where do we go from here? There's got to be some type of remedy. I want Costco to be successful, I want them not to throw anything at me when I, the next time I go, but having sat on this board for eighteen years, I identify the concern, that's why I've tried following it since January. So, yes, we approved, we approved a much greater intensity, Nashville Landing in its original configuration, but, but it was, you know, it wasn't Costco, and it was very different in how to access the site. There was going to be three sites, three access points. Spidbrook Road, where Shattuck Road was, and just to clarify, Shattuck Road, that was coming down, but they were also taking the car wash, and on the car wash site, they were going to put jobs on the left side, but that's how big that entrance was going to be. You know, today, even with the, with the adding a little bit here and adding a little bit there, it still looked like, it looks like a path. And then the other, the other access, and people alluded to it tonight, was my biggest concern when we were listening to that plan, and it would be with this one, too. How do we get the Massachusetts people to that site? Well, how we, we agreed with on, with Nashville Landing is that Massachusetts people would come off exit two, loop around to D W Highway, come out in front of Remax, bang a left, then take another left between Tire Town, Tire City, whatever they are, and the Levering Dealership. Well, that's not even a configurate, that's not even a proposal for this issue, so where do the Massachusetts people come from? Because they're all new business, they're, yes, they may go shop somewhere else while they're at Costco, but for the most part, by the time they leave Costco, their cars are full. So we're generating all new traffic, or a lot of them, new traffic, not just ten percent, twenty percent, a lot, just for, by studying the way people access Costco today, access and leave. So I don't, you know, I listened to the plans, they almost won me over by, by, you know, extending the stacking, but then I thought of that left lane where you turn into where the post office is, they have stacking there, and it never works, it bleeds out into the other lanes, nobody can get through. So, let me just look this over here before I go to my scribbles. And as I looked at, at the cars neatly turning, you know, you know, before, when you started the meeting, you had to accept jurisdiction, I would argue that the traffic issue in itself would have caused me some hesitation on accepting it. Can't answer your questions. Is that, is that a, for the whole, the whole corridor, is that, how many cars are coming into Costco? I go to Costco three or four times a week. The, I've never seen a traffic counter anywhere. So can they, can, can they tell you how many cars turn into Costco? I don't think they can, you know, I don't think they can, and I would have triggered, that would, if I had, I seen counters, that would have triggered it to me, because having sat up here for years, you know something's happening when you see a traffic counter, for the most part. So, yeah, it's not a good plan. You can't, you can't prepare for the worst-case scenario. The best comments we could get is, well, it's congested. Well, if it's congested today, do we have to make it more congested? Does that make sense as a planner? It does not make sense. And, you know, I, I, but I would, at the very least, I would ask for more, more information, they don't want to do another traffic study, they don't want to re-Q their little presentation, but is that real or is that just cars flowing? And they never got direct counts, they made it up using some manual as they do. So, you know, I, I have a lot of notes, I'll kick myself for not reading them, but I had a couple of big ones, they're guessing on traffic, and they don't have a good grasp on traffic, or at least they don't have a good grasp enough on traffic that they can convey it to you. So at the very least, you should hold off and get more information, because once it's there, they need to be contributing sixty-seven thousand dollars towards a corridor study, but if a corridor is a shambles, they'll say, well, you got your sixty-seven dollars, sixty-seven grand, you know what good is that going to do? So that's where I stand, I think that I, I'm a, I consider myself a very good Costco member, the gas would be a wonderful asset to the community, but I got to be able to get there, and I'm not convinced that they've given us enough information tonight by adding, you know, stacking a little bit and panning an extra lane for a few feet, it's going to be the solution. They got to be able to tell you how many people go to Costco, it only makes sense to me. So I thank you for airing me out, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, at this point, I'll, is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern of a question of the plan? Don't see anybody in the, is there anybody in the audience here? Anybody online?
There are folks online.
Okay, you want to just pick them out and one by one here?
Kelly, I see you are unmuted, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the planning board, my name is Kelly Jordan Price, and I am from the law firm of Hankley, Allen &amp; Snyder, and I'm here tonight representing BJ's Wholesale Club, which recently received approval to construct a gas station on property located on Adventure Way, which is directly across from the Nashville Landing project site. As an initial matter, I want to address a request for a continuance that I made by letter, that I submitted to the planning board on August seventeenth, and I'd like to orally reiterate my request for a continuance this evening. The reason for the request is, we would like to have ample and sufficient time to review, consider, and comment on the voluminous new submissions that were made with respect to the project, most notably with respect to traffic. As the board is aware, BJ's has been reviewing and submitting letters concerning the project over the last several months. We learned just last Thursday through a phone call that I placed to Mr. Sullivan, that significant additional materials on traffic had been submitted to the board. Mr. Sullivan did send me a link to those materials promptly after our phone call, but the materials are in fact incredibly voluminous, and while we've done our best to try to digest, review, and comment on those materials, and truly do not want to delay this process at all, we just have had insufficient time to review everything. I also understand that the city's peer reviewer, or was my understanding, that the city's peer reviewer on traffic, Hoyle Tanner, was going to do an additional peer review of the recent submissions, and I haven't seen anything in that regard to date, but to the extent that's still happening, which I submit it should be happening, we would very much like a continuance so that we can review and comment on those materials as well. So in light of all of this, and as I stated in my August seventeenth letter, on behalf of BJ's, we respectfully request that the board continue the public hearing and allow for public comment at the board's next regularly scheduled hearing, which I understand is in early September. So does the board have, I'll pause there, I will continue, but I want to see if the board has any specific questions with respect to the request for a continuance.
I will open up the board, anybody have any questions at this point regarding that for the commenter?
I have a, a comment.
Is it for the applicant, or is it with regard to this?
No, not for the applicant.
Okay. Let's get all the public comment, then. It sounds like there are none, I appreciate your, your comment, and we'll certainly take it into consideration, so.
Okay, thank you. So may I continue, Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. So I want to make specific reference, the letters that BJ submitted to the planning board, and those letters are dated May sixth, June third, July fourteenth, and yesterday, August eighteenth, which set forth BJ's ongoing objections to and concerns over the project as proposed, the contents of which I'll specifically incorporate my reference right now, I'm not going to recogitate what's set forth in those letters, but I will summarize some of the morcelian points. The project being located in the mixed-use overlay district is subject to Section 19023 of the National Land Use Code. Principal accessory uses permitted in the underlying general business district by right or special exception are allowed. A gas station use is not allowed as of right or by special exception in a general business district, and in addition, it is not among the alternative uses that are specifically set forth in Section 19023 of the code. The planning board's authority pertains to allowed uses, it does not have authority to approve a use that is not an allowed use, such as a gas station use. While Section 19023 of the code does allow the planning board to render decisions that would otherwise be rendered by the zoning board with respect to zoning relief, that provision is not applicable here, as the proposed gas station use is not permitted by right or by special exception, but rather requires a conditional use permit from the planning board, and there has been no request, to my knowledge, to the planning board for a conditional use permit for the gas station use. The proposed self-storage use is not allowed at all in the general business district, and it's my understanding that there's been no variance applied for. Further, even if this use were permitted in the mixed-use overlay district as part of an overall site plan review, and a conditional use permit is not required, the project would need to satisfy the requirements contained in Sections 19023 E and F of the Land Use Code. That section allows the planning board to vary dimensional requirements in the underlying zone according to certain requirements. This section would not allow the planning board to vary the seven hundred and fifty lot line to lot line requirement imposed by Section 19045 of the code. That requirement is a citywide, a national-wide requirement, not a dimensional or density requirement in the underlying general business zone. The applicant's sole reason, as articulated at one of the public hearings in this case, to create two-zero lot subdivisions, is to avoid application of this citywide geographical limitation set forth in the code, that is improper. This would also be an improper request for a waiver of that requirement, there's been no showing of any type of unnecessary hardship, and a waiver would be contrary to both the spirit and intent, not to mention the actual letter of the regulations. In addition, the project fails to comport with the circulation requirements set forth in Section 19023F, given the significant traffic and safety concerns associated with the project. I'm not going to delve into those concerns, Sean Kelly of Venessan Associates is here tonight to speak to those concerns on BJ's behalf. In addition, the project fails to satisfy the site suitability criteria set forth in Section 19023E of the Land Use Code. The project does not have the ability to coexist with existing uses, as the project will materially and negatively impact Adventure Way, including access to the BJ's site and other nearby businesses. The project does not protect the value and efficiency of the operation of surrounding properties, the project will result in dangerous conditions, an unheard-of level of traffic that will completely overwhelm the functioning of Adventure Way. Among other things, the project would devalue BJ's business interest in the property, or real estate interest in its property. Project-generated traffic will have a direct negative impact on BJ's facility and site drives, which will deter individuals from accessing BJ's and will negatively impact BJ's property interests. The property is also inconsistent with key goals and objectives identified in the city's master plan, including, among other things, the development of a comprehensive management plan for the city's roadways that provides smooth transitions and linkages to the state highway system, and the minimization of impact of traffic to the maximum extent practicable. So overall, the project is simply too big and generates too much traffic for this location, even with all of the proposed mitigation measures. So I just want to reiterate my earlier request that the public hearing in this matter remain open, there was a lot of talk earlier with respect to information concerning the traffic There was a lot of talk earlier with respect to information concerning the, um, traffic information that's already been submitted to board, to the board, and questions regarding that. There's a question as to what's going on with the peer review and what kind of data is really there. And again, uh, Mr. Kelly will be addressing the traffic issue more fully, but I reiterate on behalf of BJ's the request for a continuance, and if the board is prepared to vote, notwithstanding the request for the continuance at tonight's hearing, we respectfully request that the board vote to deny, uh, the request of relief. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Uh, Mr. Riley, do you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just, uh, two related questions, um, as it relates to the provision of the Land Use Code, um, you know, governing the, the distance between gas stations, the seven-hundred-and-fifty foot requirement. I think you heard earlier that the applicant stated that, um, with the subdivision, if that were to be approved, that they believe that the, that the provision and the ordinance would then be met. And so, I guess the first question, I just wanna confirm that, that you would agree with the applicant, that if the, if the subdivision was approved, that that, that the, the distance between the lots would be in excess of seven-hundred-and-fifty feet. And then related, I, I know you, you've raised the, the point about the, what you understand to be the intent of the subdivision, but are you, I, I guess, I just wonder, do you otherwise have sort of any substantive, um, commentary about the subdivision plan that you believe it would fail to meet, you know, the ordinance?
So, with respect to your first question, it's our position that it's an improper, it would be an improper exercise of the planning board's authority to approve a subdivision plan that is designed to create two-zero lot frontages to specifically get around a citywide code provision that requires a seventy-five-foot distance between two gas stations on a public way. So, it would be an improper use of the planning board's authority to approve a subdivision designed to avoid that clear and unambiguous provision of the Nashville Code that's not district-oriented but citywide. And then secondly, with respect to the subdivision considerations, among other things, um, and under Chapter 190 land use and the general requirements under 190, um, 138, the planning board has to consider whether or not the proposed subdivision would generate excessive traffic. And as I said before, um, and as Mr. Kelly will state, um, more fully, is that the proposed subdivision is going to generate excessive traffic and is in violation of, should not be approved by the planning board because it's in violation of, um, or to do so would not be an appropriate exercise of the planning board's authority, given the extreme excess of traffic that will be generated by the proposed subdivision. And in addition, one of the other considerations, and I touched on this earlier, in considering whether or not to approve a subdivision, is whether or not the approval would be consistent with the city's master plan. And as I set forth in the letter submitted and stated a little while ago, the subdivision would not comport with, but would actually offend various provisions of the master plan.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Anybody else in the audience or online wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a comment? Is there some next up?
I believe Mr. Kelly may wish to speak.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Or Ms. Greer, either. Yeah, Mr. Kelly's unmuted.
Uh, well, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, for the record, Sean Kelly with the Nash Associates. Um, as, as Kelly pointed out, we've been hired, um, by BJ's to, um, review the materials that have been submitted for this project with respect to traffic. Uh, and based on our review and summarizing the latest that we've submitted to the city, you know, we have a number of, of concerns and, um, relative to how the analyses were conducted, and then, quite frankly, what the findings of those analyses show. Uh, if it pleases the board, I, I won't take too much time tonight, but I'd like to just go through the, maybe the three main points that, um, you know, we have concerns with. Would it be possible to do a screen share?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Does that show up? Okay?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so, so really, there were three, three things that we have concerns with relative to this project. The first is that the trip generation, in terms of the number of vehicles that they are projecting this project will generate. Uh, the second is the trip distribution, um, how the vehicles are being assigned to the roadway network specifically, uh, how they're being assigned to either Spitbrook Road or Adventure Lane. And then the third is really the intersection operations, which, you know, the results that we've seen, you know, we feel are very unfavorable. Um, and quite frankly, they're, they're actually probably not conservative enough, given the way that the trip generation and so forth was done. So, as part of our initial view, we, we had some concerns, um, relative to trip generation. Um, there was, there was, uh, some internal capture that was assumed that was, that was too high, and I think even, even the applicant acknowledged that and corrected it. Um, there was also some concerns relative to the amount of, of gas station traffic that they had projected would be, um, internal in terms of being already a Costco customer versus someone, um, coming to just get gas. And I think they, you know, they, they did address the internal, it's relative to the Phase Two operations, the fact that, you know, you really can't assume that the Costco and the, the other retail uses are gonna have as much internal as, as a typical store because you have to be a member to go to Costco. It's not everyone that goes to the Dunkin' Donuts, or goes to the restaurant, or goes to the gym, or is an office employee would necessarily, you know, be a Costco member. And then with respect to the gas station, um, data, they, they did provide some supplemental information that they had utilized to develop that internal capture rate, which showed that, you know, about half of the traffic was, was internal. That is, they are already going to Costco to shop, and the gas station's part of that trip. Uh, the concern that we, that we have is that when they provided the actual raw data for the Costco gas station that, that they had monitored to do that internal rate, what it showed is that these, these stations generate a significant, um, significantly higher level of traffic than a typical gas station. They, they used a, what we call ITE data, industry data, which is what you would use if you were doing a, you know, a Shell station or Exxon station. But when you look at the actual raw data they provided for the sites that they monitored or utilized for that internal capture, what you see is that the gas stations that Costco builds generate significantly more traffic than a typical gas station. Uh, they had looked at four different sites, and what they found was that the Costco station on a Saturday midday does about two-hundred-and-ninety trips. Um, and, and one site actually did almost four-hundred trips, three-hundred-and-eighty-five. They allowed on the industry data, the ITE data, um, even though they had, you know, provided that empirical data, and as you can see, it's, it's, you know, two-hundred trips, so it's, it's significantly lower than even the average, and certainly, you know, it's quite a bit lower than the, than the max that they provided. So, we're, we're concerned that the, the generation that they're utilizing for their analysis, in terms of the gas station, is artificially low, particularly during that critical Saturday midday peak hour. The next thing we kept concerns with was the trip distribution, you know, how they assign the trips, you know, to and from the site. And this is focused more on, on Phase One, which is the Costco and the, the self-storage. And there were, there were really two different patterns that we had some concerns with. One was the way traffic arrives from Daniel Webster Highway, and the second was the way they assign traffic onto, uh, Adventure Way. And I think I'll utilize one of their site plans this week. Take a picture, might tell a better story. So, here's Daniel Webster Highway, uh, up here. You really can't the corridor, it's just the dash property line. Uh, here's Adventure Way. This is the BJ's site. This is the CVS site. This is the, I believe it's, uh, indoor surf and, uh, site. And then you have the Best Buy over here, which has an access through CVS out onto Adventure Way. A, as you can see, Adventure Way essentially is, is an extension of the main drive aisle of the Costco parking lot. You know, in fact, you know, two-thirds of the park of Costco are actually to the north of that driveway, and it's, it's certainly, you know, if you're coming from the north, the most convenient route to get into Costco, you know, whether you're shopping at the store or coming in and going around to go to the gas station. We feel that if you're coming from the north on Daniel Webster Highway, um, we, we don't see any reason why you wouldn't make the most convenient left, you know, right at that Adventure Way, come into the site, you know, right into the parking lot that's, that's immediately proximate to the store. You know, and in fact, when they looked at the distribution for the, the Phase Two development, they, they did assume that, that every car coming from the north would come in this driveway and go back to this area, which makes sense. We agree with that. For the Costco traffic, what they assumed was that one-third of this traffic coming from the north, you know, wouldn't make that first convenient left. Instead, what they would do, two-thirds of it would, but that other third would decide is, you know, stay on Daniel Webster Highway, travel another quarter mile from congested traffic, come down to Spitbrook Road, travel down this extension, you know, turn back into the site, drive, drive another quarter mile basically into the site, through the loading area, past the friction at the gas station, only to get into the parking lot. We just don't feel that's a realistic, um, routing of traffic. I, I don't know why anyone would drive over a half mile out of their way, congested conditions, when the, the clear, obvious route is that immediate left turn onto Adventure Way. So, by, by shifting the traffic that way, what it does is it puts those left turns into a through movement. It, it diminishes and minimizes and understates that impact on that left turn lane. What ultimately may happen is that either that left turn lane won't have the storage needed to accommodate that left turn, or conversely, the signal time will have to get changed and give more green time to that left turn, which will result in more adverse impacts to Adventure Way. So, we, you know, we're concerned that the traffic coming from the north, you know, has been understated, and that, that there's no reason you would do, not do this movement to make the big, you know, great circle route around the entire, you know, site to get back in that way. So, that, that was one of our concerns. The second concern that we had is that, and, and quite frankly, this really is the, kind of the crux of the issue here, is that one of the reasons that the impacts to Adventure Way, you know, seem understated and certainly the simulation told a good story, is that the volume of traffic associated with Phase One with the Costco, um, that was assigned to Adventure Way heading to point south is, in our point of view, very understated. What the analysis shows, what the Fussman-O'Neil analysis shows is that, you know, during the weekday evening and Saturday midday peak hour, approximately a hundred-and-ninety to two-hundred-and-ninety vehicles are going to be destined to either point south on Daniel Webster Highway or points, it would be, uh, west on Spitbrook Road. Now, there, there are really two ways to get there. You can either come out Adventure Way and make that left, and then either continue south on Daniel Webster Highway, or you could make that right turn onto Spitbrook. Conversely, you could also come out of the parking lot and, you know, drive on the building, you know, through the loading zone, past the gas station entrance, you know, around the self-storage facility and come up that way. And again, either make a left-hand turn to, to southbound, or continue through onto Spitbrook Road towards the, the Route Three interchange. Of the, of the hundred-and-ninety vehicles in the PM peak hour that are either going to travel south on Daniel Webster Highway or onto Spitbrook towards the interchange, they get a hundred-and-ninety new trips. They assign ten of them to Adventure Way. So, a hundred-and-eighty will circle the building and come out this way, and only ten new vehicles in that hour would go this way. It's, you know, it's not even, I believe it's even about five percent. So, ninety-five percent would come out the back door, and five percent would come out the, the convenient driveway located immediately adjacent to their parking lot. The weekday, the Saturday midday is, again, it's the same condition. They've, they've assumed two-hundred-and-ninety-five vehicles will either travel south on Daniel Webster or cross Daniel Webster and head towards the interchange. Of those two-hundred-and-ninety-five vehicles, it's two-hundred-and-eighty-one go out the back door, and fourteen go onto Adventure Way, these, the new trips. So, you know, we, we really feel that that number, that split is, is, you know, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, um, particularly given the fact that when they assign the traffic associated with the Phase Two project, all of the traffic heading either south on Daniel Webster or making that move to Spitbrook goes on Adventure Way. So, they acknowledge that, you know, for the gym, for the restaurant, for any of those other uses, this is the more convenient route, and yet, when we look at the Costco traffic, it's all kinda going out the back door, and, and nothing is really going on at Adventures. It's, it's, again, ten out of a hundred-and-ninety, and about fifteen out of two-hundred-and-ninety-five. So, while the impacts, you know, we feel are still significant based on their traffic increases, we really feel they've actually understated those increases based on the way they distributed traffic onto the roadway network, and it really downplayed the impacts on Adventure Way. Uh, the next thing that we're concerned with is that, you know, even, even with these parameters, even with the, you know, the, the very low distribution of new traffic to Adventure Way, and even, um, bringing in the traffic that's coming from the south, having them do the, that great circle route around the site, we're still seeing significantly detrimental impacts, and these, these aren't our numbers, these are the applicant's numbers. So, there really are two key things. One of the delays for left turns coming from Adventure Way, and then the other is Adventure Way queuing. And then I'll, in these exhibits, I'm pulling straight out of the materials that was submitted by the applicant. This here was, is part of what was Exhibit Ten in the letter that was submitted by McLean and Middleton. It was, um, kinda tucked, it was the last page of the document. But as you can see, these are the delays coming off of Adventure Way during the Saturday midday peak hour. So, and again, the, it, one of the tough things is that the way the data's presented, you really never get an apples-to-apples comparison. You know, you apples-to-oranges, sometimes apples-to-grapes, but you certainly don't get a, a clear view of, of, you know, what it would look like with BJ's only versus Phase One versus Phase Two. So, what we see here is, under the, under their initial study, which had the pedestrian phase, Adventure Way left turns in the no-build. No-build means just BJ's, wait sixty-five seconds. So, you're gonna wait about a minute to get off the corridor, which is what we call a level-of-service, uh, E movement. You know, it's, it's, it's long delays, it certainly isn't, isn't great, but it's still level-of-service E. Then what they did is they went through, and this is the, this is the mitigated plan that you've, you know, heard so much about that's gonna make things better. They took the cycle length, they went to a hundred-and-twenty-second cycle length. They removed the pedestrian phase, where the pedestrian phase is included here, so they've already added it an artificial improvement by not having any pets crossing the corridor. And they've changed the right turn, a red prohibition, and they changed the way the lane configuration is. And even doing all those things, that delay from the no-build, which is BJ's only, goes from sixty-five seconds to a hundred-and-thirty-five seconds. So, the delays, even, even with the, the only assigning ten to fifteen cars to the corridor, even with not bringing in the left turns coming southbound, and even with removing the pedestrian phase and all the improvements they've associated with the hundred-and-twenty-second cycle and everything, they're still doubling the, the delays. Waiting a little over a minute, now you're waiting over two minutes, and it's a level-of-service F movement. So, you know, this, this left turn movement for Adventure Way is critical to BJ's, because it's the only way their customers can access a southbound move. We don't have a, a back door to Spitbrook, and we certainly don't have a, a full access onto Daniel Webster. So, that's, it's a critical movement for BJ's traffic. And their own numbers, even though we feel these numbers are, are low, the delays will be higher because of the way they've assigned the traffic, still show that the, that the delays are gonna, are gonna double. And when you add in the Phase Two traffic, which is the, you know, the restaurants and the, and the gym and what have you, it goes to a hundred-and-eighty-seven. So, you're gonna be sitting on Adventure Way for, for three minutes. Now, we understand that, you know, they, they're gonna paint the blocks and say, "Don't block the box," and that's, you know, gonna save everything, but quite frankly, I think anyone that's been in a congested corridor knows that, one, not everyone's gonna obey that, "Don't block the box." And secondly, I think what they made the point tonight, which we agree with, is that people leaving BJ's, people leaving CVS, people leaving Best Buy are gonna try to wiggle into that box when they can, because that's gonna be their only means to get out because the queue is gonna get beyond the driveway. So, you know, the delays are increasing significantly, and, and I'll, I'll show the queues as well. So, this is, these, again, and these are the applicant's numbers. We're pulling this straight out of their report. So, with the BJ's only on a Saturday midday, the average queue is eighty-nine feet, and then the max is a hundred-and-fifty-nine feet. The BJ's driveway and the CVS driveway are about two-hundred-and-forty feet back. What their analysis shows, and again, this is based on the SIM traffic simulation you saw today, and, and you saw one run, which is, you know, it, it, it shows a nice, pretty picture. Typically, what you do is you would do five different runs because you wanna average the results, and that's what they did when they did their analysis, they submitted. They did five runs, they averaged it, and showed what those numbers were. And what that showed is that when you add Phase One alone, just the Costco, and again, we, we're still convinced these queues are low because they only put ten to fifteen new cars on, on Adventure Way, that average queue goes to two-hundred-and-sixty-six feet. Now, tonight, I, I heard someone say that, you know, under very extraordinary circumstances, that queue would block the driveway. What their own analysis shows is that the average queue blocks the driveway. So, that driveway's gonna be blocked half the time during the Saturday midday, and if we, if the distribution of traffic is what we think it will be, which is that people are gonna take the most direct route to Daniel Webster Highway from the parking lot, certainly that average queue's gonna be longer. So, on a Saturday midday, the queue is basically gonna, at least half the time, be blocking the BJ's driveway, and you have to hope that they, A, the, the blocks doesn't get blocked, and, or B, that people coming out of CVS and coming out of Best Buy aren't trying to wiggle into that as well because they know that's their only opportunity to get out of, out of their driveways. Again, the maximum queue goes to four-hundred-and-two feet, you know, it's, it goes well beyond the driveway now. And then when you get to Phase Two, you know, it gets even further exacerbated, you're up to three-hundred-and-ninety on average and four-hundred-and-eight feet. And again, just to reiterate, this is based on the SIM traffic model that you saw tonight. This isn't, you know, that accounts for all of the interaction, um, and, and these queues are significantly better than what was presented in the initial study. So, you know, th- those are really our concerns, where that we, we really believe that the way the traffic was routed, you know, really minimizes and understates the impact to Adventure Way, particularly for vehicles leaving the site and also arriving from the north. We're concerned that, you know, even given the, the parameters that they've utilized, it's still showing that the delays are gonna double and then triple, you know, between Phase One and Phase Two, and that today, we, the BJ's project went out and, you know, they mitigated their impacts, they moved the stop bar, they extended the two lanes, they did everything that they needed to do to make sure that Adventure Way would work for them, and, and you can see it does because the queue only went a hundred-and-sixty feet. And this project is essentially making all of those improvements moot by pushing those queues beyond the driveway location, certainly the average and max, and for Phase Two, you know, even more so. So, those are really our concerns, and I, I think that, quite frankly, the, the best way to, to the board to understand this is, and what we requested in our last letter, is to simply, and, and we don't want them to redo the study by any stretch, we certainly aren't asking them to incorporate the supermarkets, the things that came along after they were involved, but what would be, what would be helpful is to just give, you know, just the basic information you would get in a traffic study. Give us the updated, you know, that they've acknowledged that their initial study, you know, we took too much internal credit, didn't assign the traffic correctly, didn't assign the Best Buy traffic correctly. So, provide the, the updated, you know, traffic volume network, so we can look at that and see how they're doing it now. Some of the materials we, we reviewed had capacity analysis results, the backup data, some of the, pick, pickers didn't, including the evening peak. We'd like to see that. And then really, most importantly, what we'd really like- And then really, most importantly, what we'd really like to see is a summary table that shows not just individual movements, but really every movement in the intersection. What is the, what are the delays today? What's the level of service today? What's the queuing today? And then what would it be with BJ's in the future? And then what would it be with Phase One and Phase Two so we can get a complete picture of it? Because quite frankly, a lot of the information we've seen is, you know, it's piecemeal and focuses on one particular movement but doesn't really address the entire intersection. I think tonight's simulation was a kind of an example of that where we focused on Adventure Way and how that worked. But, you know, we couldn't see how long that queue was coming south on a Daniel Webster Highway. I think it's important that the board and certainly that we, as, you know, the review engineers for BJ's, get to look at a complete picture that has all that information and not have to redo the study. Just if you change the trip generation, you change the distribution, if you change any of those parameters in terms of internal capture, then, you know, provide that information. And not in a, you know, here's my trips went or down, but provide the actual volume networks for the no builds and the builds for Phase One and Two with all of the backup information so we can really do a thorough technical review. But even taking what they've done at face value and looking at, you know, the information they provided, which again, we feel is understates the impacts, their own data says that they're going to increase those delays from a 65-level service E to 135-level service F, just with Costco rather, and that those queues that today do not extend 240 feet will now, on average, block the driveways certainly in Phase Two. So, you know, those are our concerns in a nutshell. And, you know, we certainly would appreciate receiving the information we need to complete our review in a more thorough manner. That's really all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thanks. I don't know if the board has any questions for the commenter at the moment. Okay. All right, thanks a lot. At this point, I would see, is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question? Unmute, is there anybody?
I believe Ms. Greer may be interested in speaking.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Greer.
I'm actually not in opposition, I'm actually for the project.
That's okay, yep, we can take full. Do you have a comment or?
Oh, I got lots of comments. Well, sorry to delay for you guys tonight. And I guess, opening a gas station at SkyVenture is out of the question. Yeah, just kidding. There's a lot to take in, obviously. I don't know why this is on grid, but, hang on a second. It's very interesting that people are speaking on behalf of Adventure Way when they don't actually work there. My husband and I own SkyVenture New Hampshire, we built it. We've been there for 15 years. We've looked at nothing but weeds and woodchucks behind us. You know, it's, I think I'm for the Costco project. I think it's a great addition to the property. There were comments about the train station. I didn't know if I missed a memo or something. That would be great, I'd dance a little jig, but, you know, I don't see that happening in the future for a long time. So I don't know why it was really discussed. As far as Adventure Way and the impact on Adventure Way, well, it used to be called Poisson and now it's Adventure Way because of our business. We own two out of three properties on Adventure Way. And I can tell you that I drive to work every day, I go to that intersection. I drive down to Costco, especially lately because Cisco and US Foods have kicked all the, I have a restaurant inside of our business also. They've kicked all the smaller businesses to the curb because they don't have people to deliver food. So I go to Costco and shop there all the time. And I think it's a great store. I don't think that there, every day is a Saturday at Costco, I don't believe that. I travel up and down the corridor all the time and I don't have any issues. Adventure Way, I don't think BJ's thinks about other, I mean, there's other things about Adventure Way. A lot of the traffic that comes into Adventure Way just usually turns into CVS. A lot of it, there is some that turns into Best Buy. It goes down Adventure Way into Best Buy through the garage. And then those people usually boot out the front side onto DW Highway. The traffic on Adventure Way down to our place is like, not much. Like, the police hang out there, they write their reports. There's little to no traffic. Our business has been robbed twice by people that come through the woods there. You know, it's, to have a project like that, and it's not even of the magnitude of National Landing, you know, when we built our business there, we were in hopes of that train station, the elusive train station that everybody talks about. And, you know, that project with National Landing, we were certainly sad to see that project fail. Obviously, I understand that this project isn't as big as the National Landing project. Do I think it impacts us in a negative way? No, I don't. I think it's a great, any business owner would love to have traffic go by their place. If, you know, I don't believe that estimate that somebody threw out of like 3,000 cars. I don't believe that's real at all in any shape or form. But hey, if 3,000 cars came by my place, I'd be super happy. You know, BJ's, I don't know why they even built that gas station there at the corner. You know, why didn't they just build it next to their business? If I had known that, you know, that they were going to throw a stink, obviously because they're mad about Costco putting in this gas station, it appears, just from listening to this conversation, I would have, like, gone up to the meeting and denied it, you know. I would have opposed it because they don't really deal with the traffic. And also, in the wintertime, I can tell you, that street is so dead on traffic that we've had to have our plow guy plow the street because the city can't get there to plow the street. We have to get our customers out of the street. As far as the little computer thing that was done on the traffic, I applaud that lane change where the right goes right and the left goes straight. I can't even begin to tell you the number of times I kind of made an illegal maneuver where I went around that person who's sitting there waiting at the light because I want to go right. So that is a great added feature, you know, to that. And I think it's, and extending the other lane on the other side, I think is also a great feature. I drive to work every day. I deal with DW traffic every day. Is there a time of year I don't like DW traffic? Yeah, Christmas time. That's it, you know. But, you know, this project, you know, it's a great use of a property that's been sitting there vacant forever. And do I think it'll impact businesses in DW Highway? Yeah, I think it's going to help them, you know. Any, there's no business out there that wouldn't want traffic to go by their place. So, you know, I heard these lawyers talking about how it impacts Adventure Way. Well, they're saying it impacts their corner. You know, it impacts us in a positive way. And I hope that the board would actually vote this project through. I would be very sad to see this project fail because it could potentially help our business in a major way. You know, it's nothing but positive, positive impact for us. And, you know, I understand that you're looking at traffic studies. Sure, is DW Highway a busy place at times? Yes, it is. But a lot of times, it's not. And these people that are talking, I don't believe that they drive DW Highway every day. I don't think they even understand what happens on Adventure Way. So my comments to the city are, please vote this project through. I think it's a great project. I think it's a fantastic use. And if anybody'd like to talk to me about the traffic on Adventure Way, I would love to talk to you about it.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate your comments. Matt, is anybody else in the queue there?
I don't see anyone else with their cell unmuted or, no, I think you're good.
Okay. All right, so not hearing any. I think that the next step, we would typically give the applicant the opportunity to go ahead and speak to some of the comments from the public. That's the next step I'd like to do.
Mr. Chair, do you consider a brief recess perhaps to give the applicant?
Sure, yeah, that might be. Yeah, why don't we take five again? It's 9:59, so I'll give five minutes. I'll let the applicant get together as well as the board take a break if they need to. So I'd be starting again at four past. Just give us a second and then. All right, go ahead. Yep.
We starting?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address the comments that were made specifically about the zero-frontage lots. Mr. Varley, when you asked your question about whether the board had the authority under the mixed-use district requirements to approve lots that had zero frontage, I gave a very narrow answer, I apologize, probably should have been a little bit more expansive. Our, and certainly the board does have the authority if the board decides that these don't have frontage. Our position has been, and the materials we've submitted represent this, that this is not a zero-frontage situation. This is a situation, rather, under Section 190, 165(c) of the ordinance, which addresses private roads and frontage on private roads. So the creation of the private road that goes from Spitbrook Road across the development, this has the necessary, the subdivided parcels, the two that are alleged to be zero-frontage roads, those have frontage on private roads, which is satisfactory under that 165(c) provision that I mentioned. Therefore, the authority in the mixed-use district that the board has is not necessary here. If, for whatever reason, the board decides that the frontage on those private roads is not satisfactory, the authority that the board has, given that this is a mixed-use district property, would be sufficient to, again, permit the subdivision. So I hope that that addresses the topic sufficiently.
Yeah, it does on that point. I guess I have a related question and I've seen this in the materials, including, I think, the original submission from the applicant. One of the other questions that was raised was the authority of the board to permit the use as a gas station for this parcel in the mixed-use overlay district. And specifically that it's a conditionally permitted use that would require a conditional use permit as opposed to a use that would be permitted by right or special exception. So I'm wondering if you can just, if you can address that point specifically in terms of, you know, your view as to why this does not require a conditional use permit here.
So if this were simply, if this were simply the GB district, it absolutely would require a conditional use, there'd be a variance that would be required. The mixed-use district overlay here is a prime example of innovative zoning that's permitted by the statute I referenced before, 60421. As the city has enacted that innovative land use statute in the mixed-use district, it has granted the planning board quite broad authority to adjust the dimensional, the density, and then this broad language, other regulations governing the underlying district. That's, and as I mentioned earlier, that isn't qualified, that isn't subject to exceptions that are in the text. The text is what it is. And what the text is, is a broad grant of authority to the planning board. So the question of whether the conditional use permit or variance are required here, because it's in the mixed-use district, that the innovative land use controls that have been created by the city under the statute makes it a moot point. Those powers are granted to the, that authority is granted to the planning board. And that's completely consistent with how innovative zoning was originally designed, what the legislature had in mind in the statute and then as the ordinance was drafted. And from what I understand, the planning board's historic practice with regard to innovative land use controls.
I guess just, sorry to follow up on that point. So I think that the language you're referring to is 19023d1, right? Where it says, "The planning board in determining the acceptability of proposed site plans within mixed-use districts shall have the authority to modify the dimensional density and other regulations of the underlying districts." Then it says, "In accordance with subsection F of this section." And so when I look at subsection F, that does seem to be, you know, a bit narrower than just the any other regulation. It seems to go on to specify then specific aspects of the site plan. So I guess I just want to confirm, do you have a different read of that or?
Yes and no. I mean, certainly you're right, it does refer to subsection F. If I remember correctly, subsection F refers back to the master plan. Rather, it refers to Article 13, which itself refers back to the master plan. to Article 13, which itself refers back to the master plan.
Mr. Chair, if I may briefly format...
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Soler.
I believe the critical section here is 190-23d2, though, Mr. Barley, that speaks to the fact that the authority granted to the planning board by this section, this being the modification of dimensional density and other regulations, shall apply to all uses contained within or approved as part of the development submitted in accordance with the provisions of this section. So, our interpretation has been that that, yes, it's broad, but that also provides additional specificity, giving the board authority to grant additional use permissions in accordance with the site plan submitted and addresses that site plan through a site plan suitability report. That's been our interpretation of D2 there, to apply to uses as well.
So, just to clarify then, it's, the position has been that it is D2 that would authorize the board to permit this use without a conditional use application?
Agreed. I do think there's a relationship between one and two, to an extent. One provides the bounds of the authority, I suppose we could call it. Section two, though, says the bounds of that authority not only apply to the dimensional standards, they also apply to use standards as well. So, it's really both of those sections, I think, that give the board the authority to be more flexible with use permissions in this district or overlay district.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm back.
Okay.
Maybe not good. So, I'd like to address a few of the things that came up. First of all, as a layman, I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but Costco traffic is already on DW Highway. It's just coming to a different place, but it's already here. Secondly, I can see that we're totally unprepared to go point by point with BJ's engineer, because our engineer is on an airplane and didn't make it here. One of the things I can say, though, is that in the information that's been resubmitted to the town, we had the benefit of all of the nice letters that BJ's lawyers articulately outlined, and that the majority, if not all, of the things outlined by both their traffic engineer and their lawyer are in the material that we submitted point by point and answered with respect to those questions. Because with the four letters that were received by the town, which were communicated to us, our traffic engineer addressed all of that information. So, the information is in there. Apparently, they say that they didn't have time to address it, but the information was submitted in a timely fashion. We were prepared with our engineer two weeks ago when the hearing was delayed. That information's been available for a very long time, as I think staff could confirm, and if they were only looking for it a week ago, I'm not sure how much sympathy I have for them. That being said, though, because we couldn't completely answer Mr. Peterson's answer question with respect to what 6,000 cars a day would look like coming in and out of the site, and because of the fact that our traffic engineer isn't here tonight to challenge or rebut on a point-by-point basis, and because I'm certainly not qualified to do it, and because we're dealing with projections that are going out to 2032 with, at the rate that retail is dying on the vine, I think that the DW Highway will have more adaptive reuse type of operations than it will the current traffic flow as a result of additional retail being added. That, should the board feel that they need a continuance to the next meeting in order to accumulate that information, we're not going to object to that, okay? We would encourage the board, if they need additional time and are not prepared to vote tonight, to take that time and to review all of the stuff that we put in. And I can assure you that in the next hearing that we're scheduled, our traffic engineer will be here too in order to give the board a clear representation of what's going on here. It's clear that we have a clash of the tightens. If I didn't have a gas station in my proposal, I'm not sure that BJ's would be objecting and spending the amount of time that they're spending doing this. But the fact remains is we have to follow the ordinances and the regulations, and you have to exercise due diligence and duty on behalf of the City of Nashua. So, therefore, if you feel a continuance is necessary to the next hearing, then we would agree with that.
Okay.
So, if you could address that first, then I don't have to go through the rest of it, Mr. Chair. So, I respectfully request that you address the continuance first, so I don't delay this hearing in a minute and go through another 30 minutes of my dissertation.
Yeah, let me just think procedurally, whether the board can talk about that during a hearing, or do I have to sort of just close the hearing quick, have a meeting, and then I can reopen?
Exactly. I think you can close the hearing and consider the, you know, the, I guess, concurrence with the potential continuance.
Yeah, do that in a meeting.
I think that's fine.
Just procedurally.
Yeah. And just for clarification, obviously, the next hearing of the board is the 9th of September at 7:00 p.m. We do have a heavy agenda for that evening, as I get a glare from some of the counterparts here at the table, but certainly that would help the board, you know, we're happy to accommodate that and assist in whatever we can.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, I'll go ahead and close the hearing for this time and open the meeting specifically, you know, to talk amongst the board here about where we're at, get a feeling from you folks about, I mean, obviously, it seems like the traffic, there's a couple of you that have some lingering questions with regard to sort of rebuttal of the traffic information from the BJ's folks and others. But I guess if we're going to continue, I'd like to kind of bind the continuance, if we could.
If I may, Mr. Chair, one more point for the board's consideration. You also, we also don't have, which we expected tonight, HTA's...
We're aware of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, I think there's lingering comments from Hoyle Tanner, and then I would, I'm not sure, Mr. Barley, if, you know, there's still questions that you might have or others might have regarding our authority under the mixed-use overlay provisions. I mean, I think we could get a readout, you know, I mean, staff's obviously given one, but we could request a readout from Corporation Council as well if we want in this time. I don't know if you feel like you need that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I'm probably satisfied on those points. If we were to decide to continue this, then, you know, then maybe we could discuss having Corporation Council comment in the interim, just because we're continuing anyway. Otherwise, I guess, I think, I think I'm generally satisfied, but that may just be helpful for the record. And then, I, but I completely agree with you, you know, as to sort of, if we're going to continue this, I think it needs to be narrow. We need to, I think, limit and have the discussion at a next meeting very focused on, you know, specifically allowing the applicant's traffic engineer to address the points that have been raised by the abutter tonight, rather than having, rather than sort of having an entire rehearing, so that hopefully we could have a relatively efficient discussion, you know, with the expectation of then maybe taking the final ash and that. So, I agree with you on that.
Other board members? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would add to Mr. Barley's suggestion was, I'm still not understanding completely if the applicant has addressed all review comments from either the city or Hoyle Tanner. It looks like, as was cited in the packet, there's memorandums dating back to April or May. It appears it still hasn't been addressed, and I'm trying to, I want to make an informed decision, but if there's still information from five months ago out there, I...
I think staff can comment on that.
Would you like me to comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The applicant has responded to the most recent drainage comments fully to date. Mr. Ballinger, the outstanding piece of review is, in fact, the traffic review. We intended to have that before this evening's hearing. We certainly made that commitment, I think, to the applicant and frankly, to maybe members of the board as well. We have not received that to date. One of the pieces missing there is coordination between the engineering department, the planning department, and the city's third-party review engineer. We did not have an opportunity to coordinate prior to this evening's hearing. But the drainage comments are update, updated, to the, you know, the maximum extent practicable. We do need to get together on the traffic comments and get a final memorandum to the board. We did feel, frankly, we did feel comfortable, I think, that potential outstanding items could be addressed through a condition that the third-party engineer would sign off, but I certainly think that additional time could assist in, you know, with the board making an educated decision based on the facts raised this evening as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Peterson?
Two things I'd like to raise. One is the, there's the other gas station down there in the corner of Spitbrook Road and Virginia Webster Highway. Is that outside of the 750-foot range from the proposed gas station? Because it seems just guesstimating, it's about the same distance as the BJ's gas station. So, that's a separate issue, but the main thing I'd like to say is, I went through all these documents, and I looked at this big report and all this traffic summaries, and I come up with this, you know, 6,000 cars per hour thing, and they tell me, "Oh, you're looking at the wrong numbers." Well, if somebody could tell me, where are the numbers we're supposed to be looking at? Somewhere in my pile of papers, do I have it? Or maybe that will be provided by the third party. But I would appreciate it if I could be pointed in the right direction for the date and the description of the document, and I'd be happy to review that so we can make an informed decision, because this project is really going to affect that part of Nashua and everybody who works there and everybody who drives there, and we need to make wise decisions. It calls the planning board, and that requires good planning. So, if I could have the best traffic estimates possible, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we have documents dating back, I think, to February, so if we do decide to continue, what I think would be helpful would be to have a complete summary of all documents with the dates and have those available to the board for review, as Mr. Peterson said. I, providing additional time for BJ's to review and respond to the applicant's information, you know, that's fine. BJ's can probably submit something additional, and then they'll have to respond. We're in this back-and-forth pattern that at some point has to come to a conclusion. I don't believe that, I don't believe that BJ's, that, you know, Costco's proposal can be amended to BJ satisfaction. So, I think at the end of the day, it's going to come down to, you know, decisions that the board needs to make about conditions. So, I think what would be helpful, though, is to have Costco's traffic engineer available, so they can speak and rebut, and at least clarify some of the confusion that's been expressed tonight. So, yeah, I, you know, I put one with support of continuation under those provisions, that we have a complete list of all the documents so we can review it, and that everybody has the opportunity to understand exactly what all the things are, so that we can come forward and make as informed decisions as possible. You know, sitting here, we, the engineering department, you know, as part of the Division of Public Works, we've done our best to come up with what we believe is mitigation that will assist and improve the condition out there. But, you know, I can't envision what additional things there could be that we would recommend. But having said that, I think it is important, if we're going to make a decision like this, that we have all the information, have an opportunity for review, so nobody feels disadvantaged. So, I would support a continuance.
Good. Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. Well, we're in the meeting, so I mean, we can make a motion regarding this, if somebody wants to, on this continuance consideration.
Would you like to continue, or do you...
I think, I think what we, if someone wants to continue, I think I'd make them, you know, make that motion, but I would put some, or table, I guess, is what I would, the official wording. But it would be helpful to specify what we, the reason for it, and any work we'd like to see happen in between, which I think the summary of documents that Mr. Hudson talked about is, you know, is probably a city planning job. I think that that's a good idea. That could help. And then, you know, obviously getting the latest Hoyle Tanner comments regarding the traffic to us prior to the, prior to the next meeting.
And I agree wholeheartedly, if I may, Mr. Chair, with what Mr. Hudson says. I don't think it's up to this board to adjudicate the BJ's Costco discussion. I could see that going on, but I do feel it would be important for the applicant to be able to present their full side of the traffic evidence. So, I would be certainly be willing to make a motion to table. Can they, can the three be tabled together, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah, we've linked them together at this point, so.
Tabled to a date certain, which would be...
9 September, 7:00 p.m. Okay, do you want to make that motion, or?
I can certainly try, and if there's discussion, if I miss anything.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table the following items. Case 821-0028, case 821-0029, and case 821-0062, tabled until the September 9th, 2021, City of Nashua Planning Board Meeting. The purpose at which will be to discuss primarily, provide the applicant sufficient time to address traffic comments that were brought up at this evening's meeting, and to collect all outstanding written review memorandum from either city staff or the city's outside review consultant.
Yep, I think that's adequate. Does, anybody want to second that? Mr. Barley, second it. Any further discussion? Man, I think the summary of documents, it probably doesn't even need to have to be in the motion. You guys can just take it.
We're happy to produce that, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I figured. That's just really a planning function, so. Okay, so let's take a roll vote on that, then.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Yep, appreciate it. Okay, so, moving on, we just have a few things left on the agenda. We'll just try and get through these. These are other business items. So, first off, the review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at that? Is there one, go ahead, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact per the technical review meeting of August 9th, 2021.
Okay, so we have that motion, there are no proposals of regional impact. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, next up, I'm going to wait on the Historic District Commission. I think we should probably move that to the next meeting. It might be good to send around an email, maybe, and ask if anybody wants to be considered, you know? Maybe we could do that prior to the next meeting, just see if anybody wants some consideration, let you think about it a little bit, and so, we'll bring that up at the next one. Next up, Planning Board reappointment to the Capital Improvement Committee for a two-year term to expire August. First, is that, would that be 2023?
That should be 2023.
Three, yeah, okay. So, right now, myself and Charlie Boogers are, been on the Capital Improvements Committee. I'm chairing it right now, Charlie's actually vice-chairing it. And just, you know, does anybody want to recommend anybody else, or you want to make a motion to have myself and Charlie just continue with that?
As long as you're willing to serve.
Yeah, I think Charlie's fine, and I'm good. We can keep going on that.
All right. In that case, I would make a motion to reappoint Charles Boogers and Scott Leclair as members of the Capital Improvement Committee for two-year terms to expire August 1st, 2023.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? I have to get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and last up, we have an amendment to the 2022 capital improvement program. Just a quick, I'm not going to give a summary, but basically, we sat down, we had the committee meeting today, we rated two more projects. One was a police body camera capital request that, you know, the committee voted in as an A1.
Correct.
And the second one was related to the master plan, and it was basically to get a consultant on board for updates to our land use codes subsequent to the master plan implementation. So, that came out of community development or whatever.
The only amendment I was going to make, I actually, I had an error in my memo. The total project cost for the police body cameras is 1.825 million. The reason I erred there is that it is a multi- or six-year payment term that will be made, so it's a $350,000 cost in FY 2022, but a total cost of $1.8 million for a police body cam program that we don't currently have.
Right.
Both projects did receive A1s, and the request is that you vote to accept these two amendments to the FY 2022 CIP this evening that will be forwarded to the Board of Alderman.
Any questions on that? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Just, pardon my naivete, is that something that would traditionally come out of capital improvement funds, the police cameras?
Equipment does.
Equipment does, okay. That's what I wasn't sure about.
Yeah, any equipment over like 50,000, I think, correct?
Okay, great, no, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think, too, the other good thing about that one was the, all that equipment comes in year one, but they pay over.
Oh, they phased out the payment? Okay.
So, that's like another kind of... Okay, anybody want to make a motion on that? Really, too? Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
I would make a motion to accept those two amendments to the capital improvements plan and to submit those with a favorable recommendation to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, so, we have that motion to accept and provide a favorable recommendation, as indicated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Any other discussion items?
Mr. Chair, just a quick one that you and I discussed about the master plan.
Oh, right, yeah.
We have, Director Marchand would like an opportunity to do a brief presentation to the planning board before your September 9th meeting about the status of the master plan and the public comment period and the planning board's comment period. The intent there is to get the plan in front of the planning board prior to it being delivered formally to the Board of Alderman for their review and the legislative process. So, again, what we'd like to request, and I'll put this in email form for you to review, but is a brief 20 to 25-minute meeting on September 9th from 6:30 to about 6:55 here in the auditorium to hear that presentation. Subsequently, going through the process at the Board of Alderman, Director Marchand and I have discussed a potential special meeting. Don't panic, it's just an hour long, hopefully, on September 23rd of the planning board, to have a public hearing that is required under state statute as part of the master plan process. Again, I'll send you an email with all of these details, but, you know, certainly, we apologize for the second meeting, but I do think this master plan is a critical document. We hear it even referenced this evening as part of the presentation, so we want to make sure that the planning board has adequate time to review and provide comments on it. So, again, we're looking at September 23rd for that special meeting, which would be a normal date if we had a second meeting in September.
Yep. And the draft of the master plan, is that up on the site?
It is up on the site, and I can certainly send that around to planning board members as well.
Yeah, take a look at it, you know, prior. Okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right, so, I think those are good. Anybody have anything else, or you have to take a motion to adjourn? Anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so, a motion to adjourn. We'll roll vote that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes six to zero.
All right, we're adjourned, 10:35.